Okay, welcome everyone to our council meeting. Call our meeting to order and we could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The United States of America.
All right, thank you. Oh Donna, right on time. Look at that. Wow, look at that huh? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Roll call.
Here.
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 Thank you very much. So now we move on to our audience of citizens. If anyone wishes to adjust the council on anything on our agenda or anything that is of interest or concern to you in town, we're happy to take this time to, to listen.
I need longer arms.
Yes, yes, you made it, you made it. So on the list, we have Jim Norton's up first, Mr. Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Welcome.
Thank you all for dedicating your, donating your time here.
It's a heck of a, it's a heck of a paycheck. Yeah, we got a raise, zero, zero point zero, we got a raise, yeah, it's good.
There's two things I'd like to mention very, very quickly. The head of the Golf Commission, I share the Golf Commission, we talked about the ordinance that in front of you. We feel that it's actually boxing us in.
Okay.
And it's, you know, stated that we just have a cross-section of the vested parties, it'd be even better, just, just having one in there.
Better, just having one in there.
You want three of one, one of two of another, and one of, it's just, at the end of the day, it's going to tie your hands down the road.
Okay.
You have an individual who's currently the non-golfer, actually think about taking up golf. And if you kind of get a men's club member, so you know, at that point, your hands are tied. And where do you draw the line? I try to say, well, suppose a junior golfer says, now we want representation, so it can expand exponentially.
Yeah.
So please just take that under advisement, maybe we should think about that before we go down.
We can.
Yes.
Remember, remember we followed your suggestion though.
That wasn't my suggestion.
Oh, okay, all right. Somebody from the Golf Commission, somebody.
That's okay, that was my suggestion. I did bring that up before.
I'm just, I'm just giving you.
It's okay.
Yeah, no, I get it. No, we can look at that. I, I get what you're saying, yeah.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
The second part, there's another coming up, the USGA requested a waiver of the fees. It's not the Connecticut, you know, PGA, this is the USGA. It's, it's an honor to have that selected, you know, Timberland selected, you know, as one of their courses to play on. I strongly advise and recommend that we do approve that, that we will make money, you know, the, the money back and the car fees and the extra rounds plays that they're going to happen in order to qualify in that tournament.
When is that at? You know?
Right, I think it's August.
August, oh, okay, just curious.
During the week, so will not affect weekend play.
Yeah.
And most likely only, I have, half, half a morning, I have, you know, from before noon it'll be, it'll be clear. That is, that is quite beyond.
So you just got to put in, what do they put in, a request to Kate or?
I think the request is then.
Or to you Roche or to, to you?
It's on, it's on the agenda.
Oh, it's on this one, it's on this one tonight, okay, I didn't, I didn't see it.
Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, Jim. And congratulations.
Yeah.
Right?
Thank you.
The new chairman of our Golf Commission, yes, yes, yes. Gail. You're up next. Yeah, yeah.
Gail Lemire, 102 Wildamere Road.
Hi.
I'm also here to speak to and support your consideration to waive the fee for the USGA senior qualifier. As Jim Norton said, it's quite an honor to be asked to hold this, it's a national qualifier. Also, we will get golfers from all over Connecticut and potentially nearby surrounding states coming for practice rounds, range, cart, so I think there is an influx, influx of dollars there. And the USGA asks of courses for these qualifiers that are well-maintained, well-managed, and prevent, and provide a professional and friendly atmosphere. So I, I really hope that you will consider waiving that. My second comment is to give a public congratulations to Reed Myers. Hopefully, some of you folks know Reed is a fourth grader at Griswold, and he qualified for the Drive Chip and Putt National Contest that's going to be down at Augusta before.
Oh, wow.
Be, his family's going down. It's quite an accomplishment. There are hundreds of juniors all over the country who compete for these spots, and Reed got one.
Wow.
It's a great, I, I've seen an interview, Reed will be on TV, Timberland is home course, of course, will be mentioned, so congratulations to him and.
Yeah. Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, anyone else from the audience wish to address us, either in person or online? I'll be online, okay. Okay. So we'll go ahead and close our audience of citizens and go on to the mayor's update, just a couple quick things I'll mention last night at our at the Board of Finance Workshop, they did come up with a, well, it's not an official budget yet, it's official enough to go to our, just want to remind folks that we have our public budget meeting on May, March 28th, that's six o'clock, right at McGee, for the budget meeting next, next Tuesday. Yeah, so that's where that budget would be presented. Obviously, public is, certainly want public comments to be there and to, to talk about, yes.
I'd like to comment on that. We had, and I thought it was great, because I've signed up for the notification, that notification email and text about the cannabis public hearing that's going to be taking place or discussing.
On the 30th, yeah.
I'm wondering if we can do something similar regarding the budget to get, to do the same type of announcement so people are aware. I don't know if we're, if it's planned or not, but I think it would be a great idea.
Yeah, the more folks that turn up for that, the better it is. We want to hear from everyone.
Seven or six?
Six, six on the 28th at McGee. And then there is the cannabis discussion about allowing cannabis establishments in our town, be it dispensaries or, or growing facilities, that's the, that's Thursday next week, the 30th. That's at six too, right? At the high school, that's at the high school, yeah. So those, those things are going on next week and you know, we'll talk a little bit more about the budget, obviously, I, I just, I do get concerned when I, when I they, I mean, the Board of Ed budget, I guess they discussed was 3% last night in the town, I don't know what the town percentage came out to be, what was the increase in the town percentage, forget what they had said, but I, I just have seen some emails and some things online and there just seems to be a lot of, and I discussed this with the superintendent and a couple members of the Board of Ed the other day when we had a meeting with them, but you know, there's just a lot of misinformation out there about the budget and about the history of the budget and, you know, about, about the percentage increase, which we'll be talking about at the budget meeting, but the, the funding, at least at the, and again, that's not the final number, we'll see, obviously, the final number that after the budget hearing gets sent to the council in April, and then we of course send it to the budget referendum for the voters to vote on, whether it's, you know, up or down, or they agree with it. But the 3%, I just been reading some emails that are talking about deep cuts and horrible, I mean, the five-year average is 2.68%, we've had some 3%, last year was actually two and a half, and the Board of Ed ended up with a surplus. And from their own budget book this year, the adopted budgets that we've had for the last five years have compared favorably to other towns, so we're above what we gave last year to the Board of Ed. So I just, there's certainly no deep cuts, and of course, we don't cut anything in the Board of Ed budget, we give them a lump sum and it's up to them to administer it. Which they've done a great job in the last few years, they've done an outstanding job, I mean, last year, every year they've ended up with a surplus, so just have to keep, when we talk about budgets, whether it's the town or the Board of Ed, just, you know, it's important, I think, to get the facts out there and, and understand what the facts are. So, you know, we can, we'll certainly continue this at the, the public meeting on on Tuesday and the budget hearing, and you know, we'll try and get the information out, so when the folks do vote in April, I think of the last week in April for our first referendum, they'll have the facts and certainly they can vote accordingly. And the other thing this year we do need to remember is we do have our evaluations are hitting us this year, that's the five-year revale, that's by state statute, not by Berlin, every town is facing this due to the pandemic. Property values have gone up. You know, in some, I think an average in Berlin of 17.7%, that's for all the property, higher for residential than commercial, commercial I think was 13% overall, residential is 17 and up, 20, 25% on some properties, so it's kind of all over the map. So it's difficult to, we are lowering the mill rate to try and adjust for that. And again, more discussions will be at the public hearing, but it's just, we're, we're trying to take as much burden off our residents, residential property owners as possible. And it's difficult to do because we, we are a successful town, people want to move here, the school system's great. And so our property values went up, so now we got to pay for that, unfortunately, so we, we're trying to get that, that happy median balance for, for everyone, so, which is difficult to do, but so I, I have asked Roche last night and Kevin Delaney and hopefully our assessor, Roche, I wonder if we could look at the I, I know we talked about it a little bit with the, with the Board of Finance, West Hartford did a phase in over a two-year period with their, with their property tax, so I'm, I'm asking Roche just to, if we could get and we need to just kind of see how that would work for Berlin, but they, they have a formula, this was, you know, it was in the current, it was in the real estate journal too, what West Hartford has done to try and spread that tax increase over two years from the revale, I mean, it it's something, sometimes do it, sometimes don't, I don't know if it makes any sense for Berlin, we have to really, really have to look at the figures and I would, I'm hoping that by next Tuesday, we would at least have some examples of that, so we could show, you know, it might be good for some folks with their tax bill, it might be worse for others if we, if we spread it out over two years, I don't know, the legislature allows it, they've allowed it now for 10 years for towns to do this. So we've never done it, but the values are quite high and the tax bills are up quite high, in fact, now you could go on the town website as of today and look at your, just look at your address, it's under the budget, I think you just put in budget, right, it, it comes up. And you can see what your increase, as it stands now with the budget that we have proposed last night, that the Board of Finance proposed, you can see what the increase in your tax bill will be. That, that probably is not going to be the final budget that goes to the referendum, but at least you'll have some idea of what, how much it may or may not go up. So just kind of a lot to absorb, but think about it all and certainly please come to the budget hearing, we'll explain it some more, we'll have a little bit more information about this two-year phase in of the, of the increase, so it's, it's very difficult to try and, you know, get through, I mean, we know we're, well, I don't know, they say there's no recession, I, I would think most economists think we're in a recession. Interest rates are up, inflation, so it's a difficult time, and again, we're kind of, I don't want to say the victim of our own success, but popular town, things are going well, good school system, people want to be here, so home values are up, and now we have to pay for some of that, so anyway, we're working on trying to make that burden as low as possible and still, of course, properly fund all our government services, including the Board of Ed, so just keep that, keep that in mind, so that is my update, so with that, yes, you sure can.
I don't know why it's supposed to be in.
Oh, okay.
And I just want to say for a minute.
Yeah, sure.
Let's see if.
Yeah, we'll do that, we're going to do that after we get through, it's later on the agenda.
There, oh, okay.
Yeah. Right here, after our.
At seven o'clock, I didn't know if that was strictly, whatever.
I don't think they just say that.
Right.
That's true, there is no one that's online even up there, right, or because you have the presentation.
Kevin or Mike, Kevin Delaney, Micah Hearn, can you tell me what you're seeing, or Jim Mahoney, what you're seeing at home?
I'm seeing the, the seal of the town, before the video was on, but I am not seeing that anymore, I'm just seeing the seal.
I'm seeing the same thing, it's, that's what Council Chambers is showing, is just the seal when you speak.
Same.
They're seeing the seal of the town, so, yeah. This is a, a new.
I'd love to.
You're back.
Okay, thank you, is it back?
Yes.
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 Okay, so we are now to our consent agenda. I'm going to read through, what do we have, we have, yeah, we have 12 topics tonight. Okay, I don't know if I can read that fast, quickly, but we have some, I'm going to try it though, we, we have some donations, just for the record here, donations for Golf For Four, these are to be presented at the Berlin High School Music and Theater Jazz, Jazz Event, Donation 242. Approved the donation of a round of golf for and two carts abuse as a raffle, excuse me, at the Grizzle Parents Club. Pasta night. Donation of, of some more golf for the Berlin High School Athletic Booster Fundraiser. All from the golf course. Transfer $297,500 as detailed on the accompanying spreadsheet to cover higher-than-budget expenses on identified accounts from finance, accept monetary donations, $816 and $660 into the Friends of Library miscellaneous account, purchase of pass renewals. Adult program supplies for, that's for the library. Approve acceptance of the donation to fishing derbies, amount of $50 from the Kensington Garden Club, $100 from the Berlin Polish Political Club. $100 donation from the Madison Rifle and Pistol Club and $1,000 donation from the Berlin Alliance Club for the Berlin Parks and Recs Department, that's for the fishing derby, which will be held on April 22nd and Saturday, April 29th, at Sage Park. Berlin Little League approve, we're going to see if we can approve, able to sell beverages, ice cream, candy, and merchandise for the 2023 baseball season at the following places, Pettit Field, Garrity, Pulchini, Dennehy, and Centurelli Fields, I can't imagine we wouldn't approve that, only I don't know how many hundreds of years we've been doing that, so we're good, we're probably good with that when we vote for this. Approved Deborah Tubbs a rock and roll ice cream truck to sell ice cream, snacks, beverages at the following parks, Pistol Creek, Percival. More, the Bittner Memorial Pool, Sage Park Playground, a Friendship Place at Willard. Number nine, approved permission for consumption and serving of alcohol beverages at the Timberland Park for a baby shower for 100 people on Saturday, June 3rd. Accept the donation $50 and appropriate the funds for the Police Canon Program expenditure account, accept the donation of $25 and appropriate the funds to the supplies expenditure account for the police. And authorize the Berlin Senior Center participate with Newington, Weatherfield, Rocky Hill. And the Central Connecticut Health District applying the National Council on Aging Vaccine Grant. So those are the 12 topics we have on our consent agenda, I know we've all reviewed these prior to the meeting as of, as of now as well. So if there's no questions on those items, we'll go ahead and take a motion to approve those items.
I move, we approved the 12 items on our consent agenda today.
Thank you, second on that. Appreciate that, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, right, so moved. All right, so now we will, we just have a public hearing. Should be really quick, so a call to order our public hearing and the, the purpose, the town council, the town council of Berlin will, will meet at the Berlin Town Hall, Council Chambers, 240 Kensington Road, Berlin, Connecticut on Tuesday, March 21st, 2023, at seven o'clock for the purpose of holding a public hearing on the proposed amendment to an ordinance of the town as follows, the proposed amendment to the section of the ordinance adds language to include affiliations as noted in the following. Section 2-192, composition, appointment, removal, and term members, annual meeting and election of officers, as has to do with our public Golf Course Commission shall be composed of eight resident electors of the town, no more than four members shall be from the men's club, one seniors' club, one, one non-golfer. One from the ladies' club and one from the lady niners. All members of the commission shall be appointed by the town council and may be removed by the town council. Each of the eight members shall serve for a term of three years, ending each January with appointments staggered so that replacements, reappointments stay placed for no more than two or three members each year. Vacancies shall be, shall be filled for any unexpired term by the town council. Copies of the proposed amendment to the ordinance are on file for public inspection at the office of the town clerk. So that's our, why we're here, it's a public hearing, so we have, the next part is our public comments on this change. Which I think we heard already in our meeting public comments, so we'll kind of, we can incorporate those into to this hearing, right, or they need to come up and state those again, do you think?
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, okay.
Specific language just towards it that they.
Yes, okay, so, Mr. Norton, you can come up and repeat what you told us, so we can get that in our public hearing minutes. I tried to save it from coming up again, but they wouldn't let me, so I tried.
Address again, 36.
The whole show again. Repeat the show.
Just the affiliations, I don't.
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
Just the affiliation that you're recommending.
Affiliation, our chair of the Golf Commission, we just rather see a, a cross-section of the, of the affected parties, rather than have everything numbered, four of one, one of another, one of another, plus all, all the vested parties are, are taken into account, I think that's, that's all we really need. And I think we're limiting ourselves by saying one non-golfer, as you're, and as you're just saying, that they can never golf, or be a golfer and affiliate of any of the clubs that are, that are, so, so named.
How, how do you define, I'm sorry, I'm trying to, because this is an ordinance, you got to get specific language, who, who are the constituents, like?
The men's club, the senior men's club, lady niners, and the, the woman, the women's. Eighteen hole golf.
So four groups and?
Currently, there are four groups that, that are mentioned in that order, and we just need a current, just a, a cross-section of one, without.
Okay.
You know, numbers being in there, that's, that's all, a certain number of members.
Got it, so what about non-golfers, anyone who's not a, who's a resident?
Not really a golfer, but he was thinking about becoming golfer and then running the men's club, so, so now he has to resign from the committee, well, that's, that's is that really fair to someone? Right, I understand what you're trying to do.
Yeah, he doesn't.
Done, because he was a senior golfer who was not on there at one point in time, the senior member who had left and.
It could be, maybe some might be two on this one or three on the other one, because they're all represented at least by one, we have to figure out how to write that.
This was given to another person who was not a senior golfer. Practically, I think everybody, ten of you senior golfers, they're all open up to playing the ball.
Why don't you combine your clubs together then, make it simple for everybody?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're all seniors.
Yeah.
So, you know, where do you draw the line, and what I'm just saying is, you know, maybe we should really kind of, really, really, excuse me, really rethink what we're trying to do here and why, why we're doing, that's all I'm trying to say right now, and maybe put this on hold for another.
So.
Things on hold, we should just get things done.
Okay.
But would you be open to at least one from each of the groups?
That's fine, that's fine.
Right, the men's club.
So the four groups.
Lady niners and this lady.
Agreed.
That's fine, that would be fine.
And if I may, I, I still like the idea of keeping a non-golfer on the commission, there's, you know, I think just taxpayer representation for people who don't golf, still have the ability feel that they have in fault, so I think that's still important, and maybe we could look at it as doing a, a minimum of one from each.
From each group.
That way you're not saying it's, you know, you have.
Would you be comfortable with that?
That would be. It ensures a, a representation.
So that there's five groups.
Right.
So that would be five groups, just to be clear, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Right?
That's good, I think that's good. Counselor, you think that's good, Jeff? Okay.
All right.
Okay, we appreciate those comments, appreciate those. Anyone else from the public on this issue? Okay, hearing none. Well, and closing, public comments, town council comments, what do we all think about that? So remember, we, we had talked to the Golf Commission, this is what kind of proposal was initially, and then, you know, they, they were thinking of a little bit better way to handle it, which I think makes sense too, just we have a minimum, at least there is at least one representative of each club, there could be more than one, and let them, you know, they could figure it out from there, but at least everyone at least has one representative, right?
Yeah.
It seems to be right, as well as one non-golfer.
Yeah, I think it just ensures representation across all the groups.
Yeah.
I, I think that's logical.
Yeah, I mean, that's what the Golf Commission wanted, that's what the council wants, so yeah, I think everybody's in agreement, so we just got to have to change that language, or she's think you have the right language that we need, okay. Okay, so if there's no other town council comments, I'll go ahead and close the public meeting. Now, and we'll move on to new business, so we'll change that and.
Bring it back to the council as an agenda item for you.
Next, the next meeting, yeah, so that'll be on our next meeting, the public hearing is closed, then we'll bring these changes back and then we'll vote on it next council meeting on April 4th, I think it is. Okay, so on to new business, our Central Connecticut Health District report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, can you hear, everybody hear me?
We can.
Nice to see all you all virtual.
Charles, how you doing?
Having more fun than mortal man should be allowed, sir. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen, just so that we can get the presentation up for everybody. So, good evening, everyone, this is our 2223 Annual Update to our Member Towns, I want to thank everybody for having us here tonight. It's going to be myself and Barbara Gilbert, our Chairman of the Board, going through the presentation. Just some general information about CCHD, we are the local health department for the towns of Berlin, Newington, Rocky Hill, and Weathersfield. We serve a combined population of around 98,000, we were founded back in 1996, and we've had a little better than 25 years of providing a broad range of public health services to all of our member towns. We're one of 20 regional public health departments in Connecticut, everywhere you see baby blue on this map, that's a health district, and we're right there in, in the center of the state is number three. Our central office is located in Rocky Hill at 2080 Silistine Highway, we currently have 14 full-time employees, and that includes three COVID-19 grant-funded physicians that we now have, an epidemiologist, a public health nurse, and a health educator. In addition, we have over 50 active professional lay volunteers that help us, and we have oversight from a 14-member Board of Health that's made up of board members that are appointed by the member towns, it's based on population. Berlin, you have three board members, and I think you have two of them in, in the audience today and one of them online, Dr. Patch Echo is our Vice Chairman of the Board, and then you also have Ranger Rema and Lisa Panessa, who serve as representatives of Berlin on our board. Newington has four board members, is having more population, Rocky Hill and Weathersfield have three. So just a quick look at our organizational chart, you'll see on the left that we have our admin section. In the green, our environmental health section, that includes our sanitarians and environmental health inspector, inspectors. The blue is our community health. Uh, the blue is our community health, uh, section, that has our preparedness coordinator, our health educator, and asthma coordinator, and our epidemiologist. And on the, on the right, you'll see, uh, a red section, which is new, uh, this is our clinical health services division that we've set up. Uh, using some funded, uh, funding from the state through COVID nineteen, uh, that's going to be doing, uh, things like vaccination. And it's gonna be set up to help, uh, do COVID testing, piece, rapid PCR testing here in the future. So let's start at bottom line, um, so our revenues, uh, recently audited back from twenty one, twenty two. Uh, you can see are fairly balanced between three main things, uh, one is our town contributions. Uh, so we were received, uh, per capita contributions for, uh, from each one of our member towns. Uh, the second is the program revenue that we receive, and, and that includes our fees for licensing, uh, food service establishments, motels. Uh, pools, a variety of other establishments, uh, in addition to the, uh, fees that we get from insurance companies for doing things like vaccinations. For a flu vaccine, uh, and COVID nineteen. Other grants that we get from the federal and state government, uh, and other agencies, uh, help to round things out, and we do get a little money from interest. Our expenditures, as you can see, uh, primarily, um, go to pay our salaries and employee benefits. Uh, we don't make widgets, uh, what we do is we employ a professional staff to oversee the regulation and, uh, all the health of our communities. We have a professional and contractual, uh, line item, but about ninety six thousand, and our program and operating expenses to keep the. Lights on and doors open at about a hundred and seventy thousand, seventy five thousand. So let's talk a little bit about healthcare and public health, they're similar but different, most people can understand healthcare because they have that, uh, firsthand experience with it. So the primary, uh, focus of healthcare is really on the individual, where in public health, we look at the population as a whole. In healthcare, they use the interventions of diagnosis and treatment when someone is ill. Where we really look in public health, uh, of the three main components of assessment, uh, developing policy, and then assuring that policy is followed through on. Uh, the process of healthcare really looks at management of patient care. Where in public health, we look more for systems management, looking at the environment and human behavior and how we can manage that to ensure that the. Community stays healthy. The outcome of, of a healthcare is to return that individual to the healthy status, where in public health, we look to maintain the healthy community throughout the. Process. So I'll go through this real quick, the purpose of a public health agency, we really like to look at things in terms of the three Ps. Prevent, promote, and protect. And I really wish, if you look at the graphic, that we could go and ask for an ounce of prevention, it would make my job a lot easier. So let's talk about the elephant in the room, uh, so COVID nineteen data as of, uh, Saint Patrick's Day, uh, in Berlin. Uh, the number of total cases we had since the beginning of the pandemic was five thousand and twenty eight. Uh, unfortunately, we have seen fifty nine fatalities due to COVID. And the number of tests, uh, as of the seventeenth was eighty two thousand, three hundred and forty one laboratory tests, that's not counting all of the. Uh, at-home tests that we do, or that people do. So you can see, uh, this is an example of, of some of the information that our epidemiologists are providing, this is a graph of our positivity rates. Uh, for our four towns, uh, for the district as a whole, and for Hartford County in Connecticut, and in general. You know, this gives us a lot of good news, because the trend is going down. Currently, Connecticut is across the board, is in the green low transmission status as far as CDC. We continue to do response activities for COVID nineteen, though, every day, we provide vaccinations to vulnerable populations, so those folks, uh, adults who have functional needs. And the homebound, uh, we daily track cases for each one of our member towns, and our case investigators, uh, reach out to them on the phone. Uh, to be able to make sure that they have the appropriate information and educate them on how to deal with this particular disease. We still get questions every day, three years into this, on, on what the implications are for people. Um, we provide technical support for the schools, for daycares, and other facilities. Uh, we're the subject matter experts for the press, regulated facilities, and residents. Uh, we provide regional support to other local health departments. And we've distributed a lot of tests to medical providers, long-term care facilities, and the public. Uh, we have a number of free tests outside of our office, and we provided tests to each one of our member towns, uh, to assure that everybody has the opportunity to test if they need it. Other things that we, we do to prevent the spread of disease, uh, last year, we did over twelve hundred flu shots in our mass vaccination clinics. Uh, currently, if you have your paperwork filled out, we can get you through the door in about under three minutes. Uh, other disease follow-ups that we do, we, we do look at following up for things like hepatitis A B and C. For foodborne diseases like salmonella, uh, we're following up on lead poisoning in kids, and that's probably going to be. Uh, an activity that we do more of, since they've lowered the standard, uh, with respect to that, so, so the level. For which a child is considered to be lead poisoned is much lower than what it had been, uh, and that's gonna cause us to respond much more often. Uh, other vaccine preventable diseases like measles, and then waterborne diseases like Legionella. Um, as you can see from this graph, uh, for our hospital and urgent care encounters with influenza-like illnesses and COVID. In general, everything's been going down, but what we have noticed here recently is that there's been a slight uptick. Uh, and we really think that this is probably about, uh, waning immunity, because we're kind of in between the time where. A new booster, a new, uh, formulation of the vaccine. Is expected to come up, uh, here in the fall, uh, so we really do encourage everyone, uh, to continue to do the things that you can do. To be able to maintain your safety and safety of your family, uh, wash your hands, cover your cough, stay home if you're sick, and wear a mask where appropriate. Other diseases that we deal with are those things from tiny vectors, um, so mosquitoes and tick-borne diseases are very prevalent, uh, in our communities. Uh, we see cases of eastern equine encephalitis from West Nile virus, uh, Lyme disease, erlyxiosis, and babesiosis has also been found in our communities. This is one of, uh, graphs that our epidemiologists put together when we were talking about tick-borne diseases, so as you can see. This is the seasonal temperature, uh, as it runs through, you know, the year, so each one of these humps is about a year. Uh, the blue line that you see, uh, here where it kind of comes out, the thin blue line is the average temperature. Uh, average monthly temperature, and what we've noticed is that when the monthly temperature is high during the winter time, the following season, we see. Higher rates of, of Lyme disease, and then also, uh, more cases of babesiosis, and here in the last, um. Last year, we've actually seen the rise of some erlyxiosis as well. Um, so when they have those warm winters, kind of like what we had this year, uh, ticks become very active, they don't die off. And the interactions that we see between humans and ticks, uh, increase as we go out there in the woods and are active. So. What we've been able to do, and I want you to put this on your calendars, is actually, uh, work with the Connecticut Agricultural Extension Station. And a group called Blast Lime. Uh, to set up a tick-borne, uh, disease session, uh, this is gonna be at the. Uh, Dinosaur State Park in Rocky Hill on April twenty seventh from one thirty to four P M. Uh, you can sign up on our website, uh, and there's about eighty slots that we have open, uh, to be able to do this, and, and, you know, this is one of the things that we can do. Uh, since we have an epidemiologist and we can see the data, we can start to use that data to drive interventions and education. Uh, so we're excited about this particular process. Other things that we do, uh, we've done the, our response to the opioid crisis, we continue to be the convener of local health response agencies in our four towns. Uh, we currently work with the social service agencies in our four towns and have work groups that address prevention, response, and recovery. Uh, we are currently awarded a grant renewal from the Department of Addiction Services to work with persons that are suffering from addiction. And their families, and this will be the fifth year that we've been, uh, accomplishing that particular work. Uh, some of the foundational services that we have lie in our environmental section, so our environmental health services did close to a thousand food service inspections last year. In addition to the septic pool motel and salon inspections that were done. Uh, and our folks, we're very proud of them, they work hard, and they're the ones that are out there every day to assure that, uh, our establishments are safe for their, for our residents. Uh, to be able to utilize. In addition to the inspection of our regulated facilities, we do respond to a number of complaints. Primarily, those complaints are on housing and property maintenance, uh, you know, a lot of hoarding cases and things of that nature. Uh, other complaints that we deal with are food-related, so we see rodents and insects, garbage refuse. And some air-water pollution and motel complaints that we've responded to. To keep on the environmental side, uh, we are very proud of our putting on airs program, uh, this is an asthma program that does home interventions. Where we actually have a team that goes in, an environmental health specialist and an asthma health educator. The environmental health specialist, uh, does an inspection of the, of the home to find out if there's any triggers or ways to mitigate, uh, those triggers. And then the asthma health educator really spends some time on their asthma management plan to assure that they get the education that they need. To be able to appropriately manage that disease. Uh, additionally, we also do radar kit, uh, distribution, and we're going to be doing and have continued to do lead poisoning prevention. So promoting and encouraging healthy behaviors, uh, our walking competition, we're, we're coming back into that time of year. Uh, walk this May is what we're looking at, so we're starting on May first. Last year, and I know this is a, a thorn in Berlin's side, Rocky Hill won the overall competition and the impact award for the highest participation. Uh, you guys had had the, uh, high stepper trophy for a very long time, and I encourage y'all to get out there and walk. And, uh, get that trophy back in your town hall, uh, we're really looking forward to the competition.
We're gonna beat them, they'll beat Rocky Hill.
Didn't beat them last year, last year was the first time that they, they were able to win. So I, I expect revenge from you guys to be able to, to take it up a notch. Uh, so speaking of taking it up a notch, uh, we do respond to disasters and assist our recoveries in community, we have an emergency preparedness coordinator. That really works with our emergency managers in each one of our towns, we use our flu clinics each year as drills for medical countermeasures dispensing. Uh, so that our volunteers and the nurses actually go through, we actually test our plans each and every year, make them a little better, which is why. When COVID hit, uh, we really were not starting from a blank page, our people really understood how to do vaccinations in a very real way. Uh, so it's important that we continue that process, in addition, you know, we do support for flooding and other natural disaster storms and things of that nature. So as we prepare for the future, uh, we've also have some administrative and health policies that have come into play. Uh, I've been talking for many years about the adoption of the, of the FDA food code, that actually occurred on February sixteenth of this year. Which is really a paradigm shift for how our inspectors are, are approaching inspections of the food service establishments. So instead of really walking through and checking the halls and walls, the focus is really much more on risk-based behaviors, watching how folks handle the food. And how, uh, the overall management of the kitchen is towards food safety. Uh, in addition to the FDA food code, last year, we actually did a number of, uh, revisions to our sanitary code. Um, and we're also looking at, at making some changes, uh, moving forward here in the near future. Uh, I wanna thank Berlin, uh, for being involved in our community health assessment, we sent out a community health, uh, perception survey. And Berlin was far and away, uh, the most responsive of our communities, so thank you for, for that information that you gave us. That gives us a lot of information for both health improvement planning and for our strategic planning for our agency. Last two words as always are thank you, thank you to our member towns, to you, the public, for your continued support of the Connecticut, uh, Central Connecticut Health District. And, uh, we stand ready to answer any questions.
Thank you, Charles, appreciate it. Any questions, folks, to?
Lot of information, thank you.
Yeah.
Fire hose, but, you know. Get you a bunch out there, we've been doing a lot of work.
Quick and to the point, thank you, Charles.
Yeah. You did good, thank you.
All right.
Okay.
Very much.
All right. See you soon, well, we see you over there in Rocky Hill, be, walking. All right, so we'll go ahead on, uh. Number two.
Thank you, agenda item number two is renewal of our town hall cell tower lease. Uh, we had a lease with, um, twenty-five years. And it's. Coming up in twenty twenty-four. Kevin has been working on the, uh, renewal of the lease and some new terms and conditions, we'd like you to. Kevin owe to you.
Uh, thanks, Roche, as Roche mentioned, in February of nineteen ninety-nine, the town contracted with Omnipoint Communications. To erect the tower that's behind the town hall. Uh, at the time, there was a ten-year lease with three five-year renewals, which the town and Omnipoint and their successor organizations. Exercised. And it's generating in excess of a hundred thousand dollars a year of cash flow. In addition to holding, um, critical communication. Services for both the police and fire department, so it has worked out very well. Uh, today, T-Mobile USA Tower is the company that actually owns Omnipoint. And they've approached us about renewing the contract. We're requesting authorization for the town manager to sign. Another twenty-five-year lease, which would be comprised of five. Consecutive five-year leases, so in the event anything were to change, it was no longer preferable for the town to stay in it. Each five years, the town could. Exit that. Uh, we are approached periodically as probably anybody who owns a cell tower, uh, to sell the cell tower, and. While there is an appeal for a one-time infusion of cash, um, the fact that it houses both police and fire communication. The town has, has not entertained, seriously entertained those, because we don't want to. Put those into the hands of some other organization. Um, the agreement would be to extend, as I said, for another twenty-five years, five consecutive five-year agreements. And they've also offered a five thousand dollar signing bonus payable sixty days after signing, should we agree to extend.
Okay. Thanks, thanks, Kevin. Questions? For Kevin? Uh, yes, yeah.
Is twenty-five years like the norm or the standard?
It is typical for something of, of this size and, and character, um, that's why we also went with the five consecutive five-year agreements. So while it is twenty-five. We could get out at any of those five-year installments.
So I, I just, quick question, um, so T-Mobile owns. It now because, uh, Omnipoint Communications no, no longer exists or bought them, is that what I'm saying?
We own the tower.
We own the tower.
Right, we gave them a lease to, to be able to market. So they go out and market, and then they pay us a base monthly rent for that. Plus seventy-five percent of all of the, uh, relationships they establish, which is what is driving, uh, this particular year, it's a hundred eight thousand dollars of revenue.
Have we competitively, competitively shopped this with other tower people, like, I don't know, Verizon, I'm just curious.
There aren't a lot that we could find who are in the leasing business, those who have approached and those we've talked with are interested in buying it. Um, it's kind of an unusual setup in the sense of being able to lease it, so what we're doing is taking something that serves an important public safety purpose. And leveraging it for, uh, six figures of cash flow each year.
I certainly think we need to do something, I'm just curious as to if this is our best possible deal that's out there, that's all. Thank you.
By owning it, do we have any maintenance liability?
We, you know, we do, uh, when we redid the police, uh, radio system about three or four years ago. The wiring that was underground from the police dispatch center out to the tower in the back had some issues, and so we actually dug up. The ground straight out from the building out to the tower to redo that. So we, we do.
That was for the town use, but like. Do we have an obligation if the ladder rusted or something for the cell people to repair it, I don't, is there any? Maintenance that we have to do for their use, or do they take care of all of that?
They're taking care of, of all of that.
Yeah, I, I see them regularly there in the back there.
That, that's fine, I still wanna get a big bill ten years from now, we gotta paint the thing for. Hundred thousand dollars.
Roche's gonna hang from a, like. Yeah, he's gonna go paint it when we need it.
We own it, I thought maybe we have an obligation to maintain it.
But. Ladies, any? Jeff? Good, I mean, contract, what do you, what do you have to say, if anything?
Like Kevin said. It, it's because it's used for public safety, you wouldn't. Sell it, I mean, the, the market is. You know, somebody like A T C, American Tower. Would buy it, and then they would lease antenna space on it. But when you have public. But when you have public safety facilities on there, you really can't. I don't know of any of the municipalities that I represent that have their public safety facilities on somebody else's tower. It just doesn't work. So you license tower and get some revenue out of it. Kind of way it should be done. In terms of the term, I mean, these things tend to be longer, either long base terms or five-year base terms with lots of options. Um, because, you know, establishing a uh, tower location through the citing council process and, you know, going through the whole propagation study, uh, analysis that needs to be done when you cite a tower is a very expensive and time-consuming undertaking. So you don't usually see people bouncing around.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, there's no other, uh, questions? We'll go ahead and take a motion.
Uh, move to authorize the town manager to sign a twenty-five-year addendum to the February eleventh nineteen ninety-nine license agreement with T-Mobile USA Tower LLC. Accessor and interest in the agreement to Omni Point to license the cell tower located behind the Berlin Town Hall.
Second on that. Thank you. Any other, uh, comments or questions? Hearing none. Well, what on the motion? All is in favor? Aye? Opposed? All right. So moved. Thank you. Thanks, Kevin.
Item number three, uh, is the Timberland Golf Course donation of the twenty twenty-three USGA Senior Amateur Qualifier. The one that, uh, a couple of the members spoke about. I'd like to table this.
Okay.
The next meeting, um, because it's a three thousand dollar, um, donation and I've asked the director to quantify some of the benefits. So that hope can make a better decision. So it's in August, so we'll bring it back.
Oh, okay. Good time. All right. We'll go ahead and table that.
Yeah. Item number four is the, uh, option agreement for the development of the Knights of Columbus property, one forty-three Percival Avenue for affordable senior housing. Mr. Podrowski is here to give you an update. Been able to, uh, there's a term sheet that I have attached to the agenda, uh, for the thirty-three million, five hundred thousand. And, um, we're asking to come in of, uh, view the next steps in terms of what needs to happen this, uh, to launch this project. So Joe, if you don't mind.
Hey, Joe. How are you?
Good. So we have secured thirty-three million, five hundred thousand dollars for the purposes of constructing the Knights of Columbus. That includes tearing down the existing building, uh, site preparation and building to structures that'll house about fifty-one. The design work is com- about ninety percent complete. Um, and we're basically ready to go. Um, one of the things we need to accomplish is uh, showing proof of ownership, which would be vital in order to access those funds and get them transferred over to the Brawn Housing or entity, uh, Brawn Affordable Housing, Inc. We have structured the deal in such a way to take advantage of the low-income housing tax credit, should we decide to go in that direction. Deal right now is a construction permanent. It's at four point three eight percent. It's interest only in the first three years. Um, after that, it goes to principal interest if we choose to continue that direction. Four point three eight percent interest, um, what the market's going to be in three years, but I'm gonna much safe to say it's not going to be lower than four point three eight percent. So most likely, we're gonna go ahead with the loan, and that's why it's written the way it is, is a permanent of loan. That being said, the thirty-three million dollars is not going to be the final loan amount. Um, our funds available through the, uh, Inflation Reduction Act, having to do with energy efficiencies, we are going to take advantage of those. There's also some other grant programs available to us that will be taking advantage of over the next three years. So we anticipate anywhere from eleven to sixteen million dollars being the final indebtedness on this project. Um, but again, that will be determined three years out. So at this point, we are ready to go on this. I know our, my attorney and, or the housing authority's attorney and we did not feel have had some conversations, um, and pretty decent email questions that uh, came along. Um, we, we've answered those questions to, you have not received a response yet. Okay. Okay. So, uh,
Uh, so that, that was my question. Why are we extending the option? Because what was it? We were supposed to vote on it by the end of March, right? That was the last time. So what? We haven't gotten what we need.
You know, I, I received the, uh, what's being called the term sheet on the thirteenth. I reached out to, uh, Brian Kershaw, Pullman and Comley. He had not seen it yet. When I reached out to him, he had saw it the same day that I sent it to him. I sent a bunch of questions and I haven't received any responses yet.
What are we thinking about that, Joe? Why, why not?
Well, again, we, we had to meet the, uh, deadline for submission to the council. So the, the term sheet you have is a draft.
Okay.
Received that and basically forwarded over to Roche on Friday in order to, Friday of last week, in order to make the deadline. Um, that being said, you know, we continue working, um, with our attorneys to satisfy the town. Um, I don't know why Brian has not responded yet. I will follow up with him tomorrow, um, and see what the deal is.
So i- is that what all we're waiting for is the answers to those questions that you asked?
Well, it's, it's not like the questions are, you know, is the sky blue?
Right.
It's gonna, the, the, whether we're ready to go is going to depend upon whether the answers to the questions raise more questions or not.
I get that. So we don't know till we get the answers to those questions. Right? Okay. Okay, uh, yeah.
Can we make this happen in thirty days? I mean, why do we have to push it out another sixty? It seems like every time you come up here, it's let's extend it, let's extend it. But I mean,
At this point, we're ready to go.
So your attorney is holding us up here a little bit, so I'd like to see where we can go with this. And I, I, I don't think sixty days. I think we need to push it.
The term sheet actually runs out April in the paper, right?
Correct.
So, uh, as he executes this before the end of April, I don't think this is left of that, right on.
Again, this is a draft. We're still in discussions, you know, with our attorney and counsel as to the final revision of this. But, um, you know, again.
Repeat what the questions are again? What are the questions we're waiting?
I don't think we have the questions, but in general, Jeff, you, you, you're, you know, general. Sure. Yes, we have our package.
Testing, testing.
Good thing you're a lawyer, not an engineer. That's a good thing.
If I was an engineer, I wouldn't design it that way.
Well, they're working on that. Just back from the mission. We hired Northeast redevelopment, uh, Meriden to
Right.
Financing for this. Um, Sir Capletti is the principal of Northeast redevelopment. He's, uh, worked on numerous redevelopment projects. Much the entirety of the downtown Meriden area. This is he's been in downtown Meriden by the train station. Um, those new complexes in northeast of that square are his. Uh, during his process, he's been able to secure funding for this job along with several others through the city of Meriden and on a gratin. So we have given the town, um, proof of funds letter from Wells Fargo Statutory Trust showing the existence of half a billion dollars funding under control of Northeast redevelopment, part of which is a thirty-three million dollars that we're using for Knights of Columbus project. Um, you know, Mr. Denoprio has sent some of the questions and I think he's ready to move forward.
So keep in mind, in terms of the questions that I'm about to read, that there is an option agreement between the housing authority and the town. And that option agreement, which was approved by the town council, has certain conditions precedent to a closing. So the questions are intended to elicit information that would allow us to determine whether the conditions precedent are satisfied. They're not just questions that Jim Mahoney and I pulled out of thin air, okay? The first question is confirmation that the proposed lender has the requisite level of assets. Because previously, the way we understood it, and keep in mind that I, I, I've been asking since last September for a written description of the structure of this loan transaction. Okay? So this term sheet now has Northeast redevelopment as the lender. So we'd like some confirmation that they have the requisite level of assets.
Which you already have.
No, we don't.
You do.
No, we don't.
We provided.
That, that, that doesn't do, that refers to documents that we don't even have. That one piece of paper says it's based on the attached financial statements. We don't have anything attached.
You received the confirmation letter from Wells Fargo.
And it refers to other documents that we have not seen.
Okay.
It's not clear. I mean, what's in that letter? I can't do anything with that. That letter doesn't say anything.
Right.
Okay. Now, if Pullman and Conley sends me a letter saying that there's an amount of money in a bank account, then I'll accept that. Okay, but I can't accept a document that refers to other, it says, based on the attached financial statements, and there's nothing attached. But what do I do with that?
I will have to review that document.
Yeah, take a look at it. It refers to other documents.
Wells Fargo Statutory Trust stated that there's half a billion dollars.
That a clearinghouse?
That is a division of Wells Fargo Bank. They maintain escrow.
I know what they are.
Project, so.
But are they, are they saying, because they refer, take a look at it, because they refer to other documents in that letter. And it's just a one, all we have is that one letter. We don't have any other documents. So ordinarily, if somebody says per the attached financial statements, there's financial statements attached. Right? So I could look at it and see exactly whether this is hard money or not. Yeah, take a look.
I don't remember seeing that language on that.
Okay. It's written like a permanent loan, not a construction loan. So that's a question that we had.
Which I just answered.
Does the housing authority have the money to pay the hundred and sixty-seven thousand, five hundred dollar loan fee?
And that's going to be incorporated into that financing.
As Pullman and Conley reviewed and approved the loan term sheet.
They're in the process of doing so.
As the, uh, housing authority board approved the term sheet.
Not as of yet.
Does the board understand and agree that the housing authority, the, uh, entity that you're going to create as this term sheet is written will essentially be guarantors. And if there's a default on the loan, the lender will have recourse to take title to other projects and other assets of the housing authority and potentially the board members and members of this entity that you're going to create to hold title.
Number one, the project, the entities already been created and it's been in existence for a period of time. Uh, number two, we are doing a bond resolution, as I mentioned here in the past, that is going to backstop this loan.
I understand that, but that's not what's in the term sheet. What's in the term sheet is everybody's a guarantor. And, and, and if the answer to the, to the answer to the question is that's okay, then somebody's gonna, and again, your counsel can answer this very easily. Somebody's gonna have to show me where the housing authority has the legal authority to agree to those terms.
Again, that's in my counsel's hands at this point in time, so.
Um, is there a loan application that was submitted? And if so, can we have a copy?
I will check with Mr. Capletti.
Right? Does the housing authority have funding for the fees that are in the term sheet? Most notably, what would amount to about a six hundred and seventy thousand dollar breakup fee if you don't close? Where would that money come from?
That would again be part of the, uh, bond resolution, which Mary Felon's working on it as we speak.
Well, you wouldn't, if you don't close, you're not getting, you're not issuing a bond. The breakup fee, did you see the breakup fee?
I saw the breakup fee.
So that's if you don't close and there's no bond, there's no loan, you gotta pay six hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
Again, this document that is a draft document.
Okay, I'm just telling what they were asking me what the questions are. There's a documentation clause that says the lender hasn't started due diligence yet. Is that accurate?
No, it's not accurate.
Right?
Uh, but again, there's, there's initial due diligence that was conducted. Then prior to closing the loan, they have to dot their i's and cross their t's with respect to various financial statements and the like. They need a bond resolution. They need to be able to show ownership of the property, stuff that hasn't happened yet.
Yeah, that's basi- that's basically what the questions are. There's some other questions about other fees and whatnot, where the money's coming from to pay it. That gives you a sense of what the questions are that we're waiting for answers to.
Interesting. Thank you, Jeff.
Sure.
Um, okay, so you're gonna light a fire under your attorneys, uh?
I'll light a fire under my attorneys, but, uh, like I said, if we can get this closed within thirty days, that'd be awesome. And I'd be more than happy to support an extension for thirty days. But, you know, again, it's been past practice that this has taken longer than that.
Okay, so one last time. I, I.
I'm, I'm sorry, this project started, I wasn't even a senior citizen yet. Imagine living in a thing and now I'm ready.
When it's ready to be built, so you can move.
And a lot of money's been spent on it that I have no idea where this money went. I keep driving by in her bushes. It was seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant at one time that went for design and it didn't go for the.
It was a three hundred thousand dollar.
Three hundred thousand? I'm sorry, dream. Yeah. Where'd the three hundred thousand go?
Uh, to the architect to create the design and the whole approval process is being forward.
So. I know you put a lot of work into this and I really want it to happen.
Mm-hmm. It all did.
It's gotta happen quicker than it's taking.
Haven't seen Santa Claus yet, um, so. Yeah.
I understand that. Um, like I said, we're, we're ready to proceed with this. I understand.
I would.
We have some questions.
I'd be happy with another thirty days and you.
I could live with another thirty days, but I, I think that our attorney deserves a phone call, some information. I think you need to work with your people. You know, I'm not willing.
I want to be clear. Brian's been very responsive to me. He just doesn't have the information.
Well, wherever the information.
I send him an email, he responds right away.
Okay.
Your attorney.
Yeah, I just don't have the information. He needs to get the information.
So, okay.
I know.
So someone's gonna get our attorney.
I don't want, I don't want to be to think he hasn't been responsive, because he has been. I just don't have answers to the questions.
Yeah, to the best of my knowledge.
It's been a week.
Been communicating.
Yeah, it's been a week, so.
Again, you know, he has, you want answers to specific questions, trying to get.
He's got to find out what the answers are. Sure.
So I would say I'm, I'm willing to do thirty days. You have till, I think I thought I saw April thirtieth on here somewhere in terms of this being. Yeah.
Yeah.
The proposal expires April thirtieth. That gives us, you know, let's, let's wait. And that'll give you the incentive to get out there and do what you have to get done.
I've been working hard. I think the
I'm not saying you're not.
Obstacles that are coming are coming from the municipal body here. I would like to see.
Whoa, 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 wait, wait, wait.
We, look, we have an agreement that has conditions precedent that were negotiated and agreed upon around the eighth or ninth time this thing was extended. So those, those conditions have been there. I, I've been asking the same question since last September.
And I've been providing you information and there's information that I have in the record since December of twenty-one that has addressed some of these questions. And it's like, we still keep coming up with the same questions.
But there's not, you don't have answers to the term sheet. I mean, it's not like we're making this stuff up. It's all basic stuff.
Just, again, I had to make a deadline for this council meeting. So I would like to, you know, have a little bit more time to flush out the term sheet. Unfortunately, because of the deadline to first mission, we got what we got.
So thirty days? That makes sense?
I'd say till April thirtieth. That's what the term sheet, it's an end date of.
Thirty days.
I think that's adequate.
All right.
The council isn't trying to hold it up.
We want to get this done. We've been hearing, we've been extending, extending.
We don't want to be the obstacle. We want to be the.
I'm not saying the council, but I've been asking, get this thing moved. And it just seems like more questions, more questions. We provide proof of funding.
Forget my farmer logic. Yeah, we need to. Last year, I've been here, show me the money.
Yeah.
And no one showed us the money.
For ways. Again, Attorney Denofrio does not appreciate that document. I will flush it out and make sure that.
We count on his advice.
Yes. We understand.
Legal counsel.
Thank you. Yes.
So thirty days? Go ahead and. Go ahead and, uh, Roche, okay with that too?
Yeah. Attorney Don, Don Ophirio, are you okay with thirty days?
With that, Jeff?
I don't, look, it, it's not up to me. I mean, you know, when, when the conditions precedent to closing have occurred, I will tell you.
Okay.
Okay.
Fair enough.
I'm not. This, I've been town attorney since June one of two thousand sixteen. This option was in place before that. Okay?
Right.
So, uh, you know, and I don't remember this, this thing has been, and it's, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not criticizing you at all. I'm just saying, there's been more iterations and more versions of this. The project has changed multiple times because the state's priority has changed multiple times. Right? And I understand that the housing authority is trying to do the best that they can for the town.
And we had the easement problem.
The conditions precedent are the conditions precedent, and if I tell you to close when those condition proceed, conditions precedent haven't been satisfied, then I'm not doing my job.
Right.
Yeah, we, we.
It's like if you were buying a house.
At the town's peril.
Cause, cause what, how much money are you getting for this property?
Oh, they're not getting money.
I know, that's my point.
Yeah, right.
Number one, I just heard a comment.
Yeah.
It's not the town's peril. The property is going to be owned by the housing authority. The housing authority is a separate organization from the town of Berlin. We have our own bonding authorities, so there's no involvement in the town other than providing the property. The value of the land that's being provided is viewed as an investment by the state on the town's part to promote affordable housing within the community. Um, so that's where the town's participation is, and that's where the town's participation ends. You know, there is no redundant liability onto the town for any, in any way or means here.
Well, the only liability is if we close and nothing ever happens on that property, then.
Again, I threw something on the table with respect to a reverter.
Yeah, I know.
I, I haven't shut that down.
No?
I haven't, I haven't said that that's not a possibility.
Right. Oh, right, yeah. Well, so yeah, I think I was on planning and zoning in, what was it, twenty? God, I don't know.
Project started in twenty ten.
Well, I was gonna say twenty ten did come to my mind. I say, could it really be that long ago? But I guess it was. So when we approved the project, so.
New, for the new council.
Couple, a couple of years passed. There is history. No, 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 we had trouble with an easement. There was, there's been roadblocks. Jeff mentioned some through the state financing. There has been roadblocks. It has not been easy at all. I will grant, grant you that, but at some point, this got to get done, you know, and we're there. I think we're there, I hope, so.
The money, it's just a matter of dotting the i's and crossing the t's.
And we gotta, we gotta do that. Right. No, we all get that. So thirty days, does that make sense? We'll do thirty days.
We're gonna make it.
So we'll make it to, uh, April?
April.
Thirty first?
April thirtieth?
Thirty, I'm sorry, thirty. Yeah. How old are you?
Ten.
Ten, you were.
By the time it gets done, you'll be eligible for residence.
Might be a senior by the time. All right, so April thirtieth.
And just for the council's knowledge, we have the contractors lined up. I mean, you know, stuff's ready to go. So once we are able to tear down the property, prepare the site, you're looking at two-year construction like that. From our end, everything's, you know, awaiting actions over the next couple of weeks, I guess.
Okay, now that's one.
The only other question is.
One last try.
It's the thirtieth.
Yes.
April.
Yes.
Um, that essentially gives me two weeks to get onto the agenda prior to the end of April. I don't think is satisfactory from that standpoint, um, based on the questions we have to answer and documents we have to prepare. You know.
Well, at least if it's before, so what's our?
Your calendar. We meet on the fourth.
Yeah, what's the next meeting?
Next meeting is the eighteenth, so that if, if we have to get it.
Submitted by the eleven.
On the eighteenth, you have to have it done by the.
Fourteenth.
Or the thirteenth.
Those are we.
The fourteen, the Friday before.
Do the summary sheet ahead of time. Whatever your summary sheet is, just get it to me by Tuesday and then get me any backup by the thirteenth. That's if you're gonna have a meeting on the eighteenth. All right, distribute it out on the fourteenth.
Is there any way, you know, we can get documents to the council to ask that? Question, additional questions arise. I'm just looking at it from the.
Before the ma- I mean, before the, uh, the, the meeting on the eighteenth?
Can we accept them at the meeting?
So you can, but, um, it does say that the, the charter, the packet has to go out the Friday before.
Friday.
I understand that, but if there's an addition to the packet, we made a exception before.
I think it depends on what the intention is.
I just don't want to be in a position, you know, in, on the eighteenth, asking for another.
I'd rather have you on the agenda and we say, we could waiver it or we don't need it.
Okay.
And you miss.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't think, yeah.
Okay.
Let's shoot for it.
Yeah. Yeah.
I was gonna just say, we've been here thirteen years, so I'll be okay if you want to give sixty days, then that dead, that's it. I mean, by sixty days, if you don't have it.
Yeah, I agree.
We want to get things done.
I know, I do too.
Move on.
This way, it's a hard stop, sixty days. It's got the time to do it, and we all agree now. Now, then sixty days. More extensions, so at least go.
Six in one, half dozen the other, really. I don't know if it matters, but.
Logistically, the council's gonna have to approve transferring title. So.
All right.
You know, there's, there's stuffs the council has to play in this role, and, you know, absent a special meeting to that purpose.
On the phone tomorrow with Pullman Conley.
Yeah.
Get all the documents.
I'll send an email tonight.
We can get it tuna, we'll bring it tuna about the option.
So we can bring it sooner, yeah.
Make it faster.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
I would love to.
Yeah, all right, fine. We'll, we'll just do this sixty, that, that's it, Joe.
All right.
That's it. It's done. No more, no more project. For Berlin Housing Authority.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right. All right, thank you. All right, thank you, everybody.
We're back to May thirty first.
Yes. So we'll, we'll go ahead and take a motion on that.
Move to authorize the town manager to extend the option agreement between the town and the Berlin Housing Authority from an end date of, from an end date of March thirty first, twenty twenty-three to a new end date of May thirty first, twenty twenty-three.
All right, thank you second on that.
I reluctantly am severance. I will not do it again.
All right, thank you, Donna. So, all right, so, uh, we have a second, we have, uh, motion, uh, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right, so moved.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Then item number five is the authorization for the town manager to request a relocation of section of the Wigwam Road right away. The leave, Mr. Mahoney's not there today, so Chris, are you taking this?
I'm here.
There he is. There he is.
So we, we've discussed this before. We did the A twenty-four referral, but the, when the town abandoned a section of the old Wigwam Road and, um, the New Britain Water Department has abutting properties on both sides, we retained, um, right away for public use along, you know, right, a- along, along that old Wigwam Road right away. The problem is that part of it's underwater, so it really doesn't do us any good. So, um, we had meetings with, um, the New Britain Water Department about trying to reroute, reroute a possible, uh, trail through and around the water so that we could make a connection from Reservoir Road to, to Ragged Mountain. And they seem receptive to that. Uh, first step, we're, we've been doing some other steps, but obviously at this point, the next step is to, to authorize the town manager to actually make a formal request to the city of New Britain to relocate the right away. So that's what we're asking for tonight.
Okay. Mister Council, we good, good with that?
Yeah, it's fine.
Making sure. Um, okay, so, uh, any questions, folks? Not, we'll go ahead and, uh, take a motion.
Move to authorize the town manager to correspond with the city of New Britain to request the relocation of Wigwam Road right away.
Thank you, second.
I'll second that.
All right, thank you. Uh, if there's no other comments and questions, go ahead and vote on the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, all right, motion carries. All right.
Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Good night. Item number six is, uh, authorization for the town manager. I made it a subordinate, the facade and landscaping program lean in sixty-seven Farmington Avenue. Stages.
Yes, thank you very much. Doctor Tasadi's building, uh, he has since retired. A tenant moved in. That tenant is now moving next to the, uh, focused physical therapy. And so a buyer's coming in, another dentist's office, pediatric, and so essentially the mortgage holder of the bank is wishing to subordinate our lien below theirs. Uh, we've done this before through the council, uh, pretty straightforward. Um, again, it'll end, um, relatively soon in October. The lien will go away after the five years, but essentially looking to subordinate our facade lien underneath their main mortgage.
That was before, if I recall, right? Yeah, okay. Any questions, folks, before we take a motion? No, we're good, okay, uh, motion?
Move to authorize the town manager to execute the attached subordination with respect to the statutory mortgage form deed in the original principal amount of six thousand five hundred twelve dollars and two cents dated October twenty fourth, two thousand eighteen and recorded October twenty fourth, two thousand eighteen in volume seven hundred and fifty-two at pages two hundred eighty-eight through two hundred ninety-four in Berlin Land Records. Subject to the review and approval of Corporation Council.
Thank you, second on that.
Second that.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, uh, vote on the motion, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. So Chris is still here. Still here. You're still here, Chris.
We got some tax abatement existing programs. The first one is, uh, one, two, tax abatement for Kids LLC.
Yes, uh, Kids LLC, which is actually, uh, the owners of Stick Village, which is down on Webster Square Road, uh, the five buildings that the Wicklins family has built. They are nearly complete on building five. Building four is completely, uh, constructed and occupied. Uh, the good news about one sixty Webster Square is a tenant that's in building one, which is somewhere over the spectrum is doubling their size. So they're gonna be taking building one and building five, so that's great news, providing services to a family with autistic children. Um, and basically asking for a three-year tax abatement on each of these because they had spent between a hundred and fifty thousand and under a million dollars on each of the buildings.
Okay. That's our existing plan, right, Chris? Our existing abatement?
Yes, that is.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, and that's what we do, folks, with the tax abatement plan. You know, we have it at different levels of spending by, uh, folks that are, uh, uh, building, uh, developments and buildings in town, so they can, uh, get their building built. We take a little bit of a discount. They take a little discount on their taxes until they get to the uh, the end of that abatement, which however many years it might be, uh, again, depending upon the amount of the, of the building, of the project and, uh, and then they, of course, pay the full, the full tax amount. So that is what has drawn a lot of development to our town, so that's the way we do it. Uh, anyway, so, uh, okay, questions, folks? Any questions? Hearing none, uh, we'll go ahead and take, I guess, two motions here, Charlie.
Uh, move to approve the tax abatement for Kids LLC for the construction of a five thousand square foot building at one fifty Webster Square Road of fifty percent in year one, forty percent in year two, thirty percent in year three.
Second on that?
Let's second that.
Thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved, motion two.
Move to approve the tax abatement for Kids LLC for the construction of a four thousand three hundred and twenty square foot building at one sixty Webster Square Road, two percent in year one, forty percent in year two, and thirty percent in year three.
All right, thank you. Second on that?
Second that.
Thank you very much. Uh, any other comments or questions on this motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved.
Thank you, council members. Have a great night.
All right, thank you, Chris.
Good item number eight is purchase of fire fighter personal protective equipment. CNS Specialty. Fire stove. Seeing national purchasing partners contract. Simon's here, if you have any questions, or want to say something, Jim.
Anything, Jim? Might as well take a walk off, come on, why not? Been sitting there a long time, yeah. Those seats are not the most comfortable. Yeah, exactly. How you doing, Jim?
Thank you. Um, so each year we purchase a certain amount of protective clothing. Protective clothing is selected on a ten-year basis. So with NFPA, they have a ten-year replacement for every piece of equipment that is ten years ago. Um, so we select equipment every ten years as to who that manufacturer is going to be for that period of time. Um, we've been with this manufacturer probably for four or five years, get ready to start the evaluation, go out again, see if they're still up the line for firefighters. With that ten-year replacement plan, there is a certain amount of protective clothing that is replaced each year. For this to be annual. Place it, the guys that are fitted for it, so.
Okay.
Protective clothing is a coat.
Coat.
Pair of pants.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, the coat and a pair of pants cost three thousand seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars.
Really?
Just for that.
Wow.
Wow.
Very expensive.
Yeah.
I gotta check our firemen.
Well, as long as it works, and I know it does, so that's, uh, that's what we gotta do. Yeah, okay, no, that's great. Appreciate the explanation. Any questions for Jim? If not, we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Move to approve the purchase of Lion Fire Department protective clothing from CNS Specialty in an amount not to exceed forty thousand dollars, utilizing the PP NPP Government National Purchasing Partners Contract, PS two zero zero six five eight.
All right, thank you, second on that?
I'll second that.
Thank you very much. If there's no further questions, we'll go ahead and vote on the motion. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right, so moved.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Jim.
Agenda item number nine is a fund project. We approved the funding for this, uh, this year, twenty twenty-three, and it's, uh, opening up the place in the old carpet of thirty years old.
Only thirty years old? Oh, come on.
Good mileage from it. So, uh, again, the facilities director and Kim McNally's been thinking on this. Everybody wants to talk about it. Well, yes, that would be great, yeah. You, you have been so. Pretty happy about this, so.
McNally, I'm the library director.
Yeah.
Um, but yes.
How are you?
I'm good.
Good, good.
So our library building was built in nineteen eighty-eight. So the carpet that's in there now is original.
Oh. My goodness.
Thirty-three years.
Oh, boy.
Um, and it's a faded blue and.
Lovely.
I remember that.
It has, yeah, yeah.
Um, but it's time for an update. And we, uh, have twenty-two thousand square feet, fourteen thousand of that square footage is carpeted that we are replacing. We've been working with a designer since January of this year who's provided us with, um, samples and color ideas, and we finally settled on a carpet that we absolutely love, um, which has spurred some paint on our walls, and we're really excited about it. Um, but we are ready to move forward with this project and actually, um, go to bid with it, so. Doug, do you have anything else you'd like?
Evening, Mr. Mayor Counselors.
How you doing, Doug?
Said it, so it's been a work in progress, kind of like the, take some time to do it, right? It's been several decades, so.
Yeah.
Some of the, uh, some funding wasn't covered for architectural engineering.
Yeah.
Had the plant inspection, real estate, protected, worked with us, with the designer, to kind of pull a color pattern together. Um, had a lot of sheet movers to come and give us some pricing to the furniture of the books. Huge impact to stack all the books up, shelves, shelves. A while, get the timing, but, um, we're protecting the designer, who identified some contractors on shortlist. On pricing of the product that's chosen, so I'm choosing to go with this, somewhat vocal, in the past, so.
Appreciate that, Doug. I wonder if this carpet will last this long going forward?
Get a thirty-year warranty?
Want to find out.
No, no.
You can't let us.
Wipe your feet.
Yeah, wipe your feet before you go, yeah, exactly. Okay, any questions?
Shopped around, I'm assuming? In terms of pricing, because I don't see anybody else put these guys listed here, I was just curious.
Really? Wow. And what is, uh, what's the, uh, preference in going with this particular carpet?
This particular product, um, the color is such that it reads neutral when you're, when you're kind of looking at it and it's laid out on a floor. Has vertical pattern in it that incorporates many different colors, which will allow us to, you know, update our furniture and colors over time, and we can, I guess, for lack of a better word, grow with the carpet.
Yeah, great. Very good. Um, and then what about the process of installation? How's it gonna impact the library's functioning?
Right. So it will only impact programs during the month of May. We've been talking about it as a staff. Um, that we won't do any programs in May or do limited programs, so that we can have the delineating room free for moving books and, um, installing the carpet. Doug, how, how long will the installation actually?
We're gonna coordinate with the movers and the library staff as far as duration, but looking at that two-month window. Initially, the concept was to do a scale design, being, then we realized that product was available on contract, so try to minimize additional costs. Time frame of that, we're in a large contract that I can manufacture.
And then when, when is installation scheduled for? May?
Not scheduled yet, but hoping for May with a deadline of June seventeenth before summer reading.
Right, because I know you get busy, so.
I think we're good.
Enjoy, yeah.
Yeah, that's great.
Well deserved after thirty years.
Hope you all come and see it when it's in.
Absolutely. We'll have a ribbon cutting on it, about that, before I make walks on a ribbon cutting.
No food or beverage.
Yeah, yeah, no food, though, yeah, exactly. Yeah. No food, no coffee, no anything, yeah, absolutely. Alright, thanks, Kim. Thanks, Doug. Uh, okay, we'll go ahead and take a motion on this.
Move to utilize State of Connecticut DAS contract two zero PS X zero zero eight eight. And approve the estimate from McBride Wayside Carpet of Lincoln, Connecticut. The amount of one hundred thirty-seven thousand eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars, which includes a five percent project contingency and prevailing wage for the replacement of the carpeting. There's that for the design scope at Peck Memorial Library.
Second on that?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Uh, if there's no further questions, we'll go ahead and vote on this motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, so moved.
Right. Thank you.
Right.
Again. Agenda item number ten is the, uh, fire alarm replacement at, at Griswold Schools.
Hmm. There you go.
Another good project.
Yes, indeed.
Yes, this is, uh, the last two, um, schools in our district, last two elementary schools and also within the district. Um, consistent with what was done a few years ago at Hubbard.
Oh, yeah.
Funding, unfortunately, as, as time goes on, everything seems to be more and more costly.
Yeah.
Initially, it was gonna be Willard, um, that proposal fell short of current funding at the time. Additional funding was, was carried over, and proposals we got to do Griswold required even more funding, so fortunately, uh, I instructed the town manager to be able to find some additional funds and support, you know, through our accounts with the Board of Ed, and be able to cover the shortfall, not much contingency or really any contingency, but we have kind of a lump sum state contract price. Other, uh, design engineering's done in-house, so whether we break it out of the project separately and then route the bid, or this, this firm luckily does it one-stop shop, submits everything designed by fire marshal, local official, so we've had good luck. It's consistent with, uh, four other schools that will be in the district. So we have some consistency for maintenance agreement service over the course.
Oh, that's good, yeah.
Have, have good, good luck with them, and for, for close firm, able to respond in a timely manner if you need service, so.
Yeah.
Uh, feel confident as far as products procurement, materials, they, they feel that they can accomplish projects this summer, um, with the notice now that we're picking them hopefully approved tonight. Coordinate as we need to. The Board of Ed's aware of it, as far as coordinating, grizzled the impact of that this summer, so.
Yeah. Good. Okay, questions for Doug? Okay, hearing none, we'll go ahead and take a motion on this?
Move to approve the proposal from Integrated Technical Systems of Wallingford, Connecticut. Utilizing the State of Connecticut DAS contract number one eight PS X zero 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 five. And the amount of two hundred ninety-two thousand five hundred dollars to replace and upgrade the fire alarm system at Anna Hart Willard School. Move to approve the proposal. Um, integrated, that's a repeat thing.
Oh, yeah, what?
Sorry, there are just two separate motions, one for each school.
Ah, okay, okay, gotcha. So that, that, the Willard School ended there, alright, so that's one. Yeah, I see that's in the middle of it.
We're on them together or separate?
Uh, we do separate, so, um, alright, so, all those, second on that one?
Second that.
Thank you. Uh, any other, if, if there's no questions, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, alright, so moved, and then the second one for the other school.
Move to approve the proposal from Integrated Technical Systems of Wallingford, Connecticut. Utilizing the State of Connecticut DAS contract number one eight PS X zero zero five. And the amount of two hundred sixty-one thousand to replace and upgrade the fire alarm system at Mary E. Grizzle School pending additional funding approval by the Board of Finance.
Second on that?
I'll second that.
Alright, any other, if there's no further questions, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, alright, so moved.
Thank you.
Alright, thanks, Doug. Oh, yeah, here we are again, Doug.
The, the next project, I mean, it, it's not as old as a library carpet.
It's getting there.
Um, so the truck wash.
Yes, the truck wash. Oh, yes, the truck wash.
Conversation in twenty nineteen.
Been a while.
Again, Mike, uh, put a proposal together, was three, three, four, forty, that range, depending on what you wanted. One forty thousand, I mean. Went to, uh, planning and zoning eight dash twenty-four review, and that up at Public, uh, Building Commission referred to them. That was a fully automated Cadillac machine that.
Cadillac of.
One point two million. So, uh, we all felt at that point that was not something the town wanted to do, so still fine gentlemen. Again, Mike have worked together with the, she submitted the bids to come up with a project to, uh, to work with the money that we have on hand, so.
That's great.
Let me do what you, you and, um, Mike.
Sure, yeah, just, just a quick, uh, just to follow up, as Roche mentioned, and I'll turn it over to Mike, uh. Yeah, it, it brought to us, it was brought to us first, two thousand nineteen as a safety concern. Um, so we, we were just, uh, asked to kind of get a concept, preliminary budget. And the PBC took it over, and a very comprehensive job with Public Works to look at fully comprehensive option, the automation. What, what could, what, if we're gonna invest the money, what should we really do? Fortunately, the cost of everything, you have to scale it back, so open that. When, when one of the bidders seemed to be the rare option all three times of the RFPs. Most comprehensive, all-inclusive, able to build a scope that was always identified, and you feel confident, asking for a bid waiver with your support. Go with them, feel they can accomplish it. Not everything we're gonna have included, but certainly as additional funding allows, we can go back and add in features, but this will get shell, the weather tight, safe structure, really accomplish what's initially requested, and then from there, so, Mr. Hearn's on, I believe he can speak, speak more to it.
Yeah, um, I just wanted to first point out that the Public Building Commission is fully aware of what we're doing. We actually went to them before we started this. Um, and the other thing is, it does meet the statement of need. The public, the Public Building Commission felt strongly that there should be an automated drive-through system, but, um, we were we were pointing out to them that really was, the objective was to enclose the existing canopy. They wanted to demo it, new, a new structure, a new, um, a full, fully automated touchless system like a car wash. So taking that out of the mix saves two hundred thousand dollars right off the bat. Keeping the, yeah, keeping the existing canopy and not demoing it, and then just adding on and closing it not to a length of sixty feet, which is what we proposed, but to around forty-five feet, so we can fit a truck with a plow on it. Saves a lot of money, and we're gonna be doing some of the slab demolition, the site work, some of the electrical, um, trenching and that kind of thing. So this is sort of a hybrid design build. J A Rosa came in all three times in our, um, design build RFPs, which were full, full, full design build. They were gonna do everything. Um, they were by far the most qualified and cost-effective, um, contractor. So we negotiated with them, gave them, um, a, a newer, a scope with, uh, or actually going back to the old scope, which was use what we have, the steel canopy, the roof deck, add-on. You know, use what we have, and then try to meet the budget, and thankfully, they actually are, um, under the budget, um, limit that we have right now. So that's kind of where we are. Um, one of the things too is that, um, we're going to be, um, handling the permit as well, permitting as well, so that saves some more money. So it's sort of a hybrid where we're doing some of the work, they're doing most of the building work. We also verified that the footings for the building meet current code. We found as-built, and the highway guys did a test pit. So we can satisfy the building department as well in permitting it. So that actually sets us up for going ahead with the existing funding available.
Thanks, uh, thanks Doug and Mike. And I, I assume the car wash now will be the hand wand, the wash where you wash, self-wash the truck?
Yes, um, it does not preclude adding little components. For example, I would love to put an undercarriage spray component where trucks come in, we have, it's almost like a, uh, under, like pressure drets that spray the underside of the chassis. Um, get the salt off the frame, so that's not two hundred thousand dollars. That could be, you know, when we have funding, we can add that in at the front end. It's gonna be nice because we're gonna have, uh, overhead rolling doors at both ends, so it's could, still can drive through. So it still wouldn't preclude us from putting in a smaller touchless system, but for now, we just wanna make the, the situation safe, so it doesn't ice up on the floors. It drains, it's heated, and, um, we're gonna be doing some work on the highway garage to increase the electrical capacity because the panel's already maxed out, so there's some stuff we would probably have to do anyway. And Doug could probably attest to this, but that's what we, and I know this is a big ask. This is a bid waiver for almost five hundred thousand dollars. But the previous ask was a million for the Cadillac. We're going for the Honda. That will take us around town just fine.
Yeah, we, no, we appreciate you working on that. Yeah, we did all think it was a bit much, and, uh,
Yeah.
The main concern is obviously our, our, uh, you know, employees are safe. And it's not icy when they're trying to clean our trucks off and make, make them last longer, so we, we, we get that, uh. And I, you know, some people have told me that the wand is better, because you could actually get into the crevices more than an automatic car wash, because you know when you get out of an automatic car wash, a lot of stuff doesn't really get hit by the water. Although the one in Cromwell's pretty good, I hate to say that, but it's in Cromwell, but, uh, that one's pretty good, but you still don't really get it clean. You know, when you wind it yourself, which is not fun in the winter, but, but this will be heated for, for the, you know, employees, and they could I'm sure do a pretty good job cleaning it off.
Yeah, and, and it also functions as an, as an extra bay for the highway garage, so we can stick a truck in there. So it may have another, another use for, uh, you know, at times.
Yeah, yeah, I appreciate you, you guys looking at this and, and bringing it back, you know, going back to the drawing board and, and getting something that will certainly help us and help our employees do their job better and, uh, protect our equipment and, you know, but a little bit more reasonable cost, so. Good questions? Yes, yeah.
I can't resist. So does it give you a hot wax, too?
That'll be a hand wax.
For the driver.
Yeah. Hand waxes are better anyway, I think, never mind, I forget it. Alright, so, yes, yes.
Sorry.
Um, a quick question, because I was here as part of the.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Portion of it. I, I'm just, just so I know, was it looked at too, to maybe compare the cost of this to using a service to come in and wash the truck?
Yeah, I think we looked.
Don't know if there's.
Yeah.
Benefit either way, so that's, I just figured.
Yeah, we looked.
We even looked at it.
It's cheaper, I don't know. I mean, yes.
Is the use of the space and.
Yeah, yeah.
Enclosing that space so that's safe, occupy that, that was really the statement of need that came forward.
Right.
identifies the safety.
Safety thing.
The employees, the liability, risk management.
Mm-hmm.
That, that's kind of what's got the ball wrong. The, the original structure was put up in two thousand and three.
Right.
Um, and then at the time, I'm sure it was a budgeting.
Yeah.
This was a thought is the, it's structurally sound, expand on it, close what we have versus knocking it down, starting over, the cost.
Were there other bidders? Anyone fit on this?
With the lower bidder, right, every time the PBC went out.
I think they said this was a low bidder.
Yeah, this is the lowest.
Low one, I think they said, yeah.
The, the way the three RFPs were, um, can elaborate further, but there was a lot of alternates, deducts, what the owner would do. In my recollection, the results here is this particular bidder, fully inclusive all the time, the most comprehensive, so we they were the most qualified.
Is this building going in a flood plain?
Yes, and there's flood dampers proposed for it. All the equipment will be above the, um, under your flood level. And it'll be cinder block and steel.
But there's, are there flood baffles that'll blow out and prevent?
Yeah, well, they're gonna put, they're gonna put flood dampers in the, uh, in the block, walls. And the overhead doors will allow, we can roll, we can roll them up, but we also need, I think, by code, perfima, to actually put the flood dampers in the solid walls as well.
Because no one else could build this anywhere in town, and you shouldn't build things in a flood plain.
Yeah, the highway garage, the park, the parks and grounds garage, uh, part of the water control property is all, you know, right there. Just above the top of banks, so that's where the town put it, and that's what we have to deal with.
I want our public works guys to be safe. They work hard, and it's dangerous work in the winter. I know I've been out there and done that kind of work. Um, and I want this to proceed. Where's the money coming from? It says budgeted, but budgeted from where?
I think we put it in the budget last year, right?
I think, yeah, I think.
It says budgeted, I know what.
We did put it in there for this, because that.
Um, not sure if, I have to look back. I'm not sure if it was a low sub allocation or. It went through.
The money's already there.
Yeah, funding's available. Not asking for any.
You spend a half million dollars on a swamp scares me, but. I wish, I keep begging for someone to talk to the state to fix Route Nine, until they fix the bridge on the Route Nine. It's always gonna be a disaster zone. When we have a major problem with flooding, the equipment we need will be underwater. We'll need a rowboat to go find it. Alright, I guess I'm okay with it. No else to do with it.
No, I don't know, other than we can move the whole town garage and build a whole new complex somewhere. No, you don't wanna put that on the budget?
If we could get this.
I don't think we're gonna get the money.
Get the state to do their job and fix the bridge, we wouldn't need to move it.
Well, Charlie, that's always the problem. Get the state to do the.
DOT.
Good luck with DOT, yeah. Get the state to do their job. Now, that's a, that's quite.
So, not working from home, but.
Yeah.
A lot, a lot of federal money.
Yeah, that's true.
Do these things.
Yeah, I know. I don't know, um. Any other questions, comments? Yeah, so, that, can, uh, what, where do police cruisers get washed? Do they just go to a car wash? They go into the car wash?
Saying they use a local car wash on Burnham Street, they.
Oh, the one on Burnham, yeah.
Utilize coupons with the drive-through, the automated one.
Oh, okay, yeah, okay. I guess need be, if they had to go through here, they could, right? They wanted to.
Get out and. Still fit everything but the ladder trucks, I believe, so.
Oh, good, so, so the, uh, the fire department too will fit.
Except the bigger trucks, ladder trucks.
Yeah, okay.
Will take pretty much all public works, uh, highway, public grounds.
Yeah.
Accommodate most of the apartments.
Good. Yeah, that's great. Okay, any other questions, comments? I think, no, we're good? Okay, we'll go ahead and, uh, take a motion.
Move to approve a bid waiver and proposal from J A Rosa of Walcott, Connecticut. The amount of four hundred ninety-three thousand dollars, which includes a seven percent project contingency. To expand and enclose the existing wash bay structure located at the Highway Department within the Physical Services Complex at the Town Farm Lane, and this is in the best interest of the town.
Second on that?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Uh, any, if there's no other questions, we'll go ahead and take a, uh, motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, so moved. Thanks, thanks, Doug.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Mike, thanks. Agenda item number twelve, it's a request to waive the bidding process for fleet pump service. The Berlin Water Control.
I'll talk to you with my, uh, the second item mostly that I bring in, uh, our pumps are, we have ten and pumping sites, and as a result of that, I can believe that, uh, of most of these pumps, because they're pumping sewage, uh, go very quickly. So we're at a position now where we have two of them that we're going to repair at five thousand dollars a piece. And buying a brand new one, that's at almost fifteen thousand dollars a piece. And, um, this was suggested that I should ask for a little bit more, only because by the end of the fiscal year. Uh, because typically one or two of them might need to be, be, uh, replaced or repaired by the end of the year. So I'm asking for the, the full amount to be covered. Fleet is our provider. And they're the only provider of flight pumps, and all our pumps are flight pumps. And they're the only provider of flight pumps and all our pumps are flight pumps, which are basically uncommon. We use them in our pumping stations, sewage pumping stations.
Okay, um, questions? It's great you're repairing them. So saving us some funding there, which should.
We're lucky raised on.
I was just gonna say, no. No show and tell tonight.
I do. Oh, do you? Oh, alright, well.
Let you go.
Don't ask. Don't ask. Spoke too soon, Donna. Yeah, show and tell is always nice. Yeah, we like to see things. Yeah, anyway, so there's no other questions? Probably need to repair our sewer pumps. That's probably pretty important. So um, go ahead and uh, take a motion on this.
Move to waive the bidding requirements in case of pump failure or needed repairs and approve the hiring. Fleet pump and service for an amount not to exceed forty-five thousand dollars through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. This is in the best interest of the town.
Second on that?
Second that.
Thank you. Uh, any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Alright, so moved.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ray.
Thanks.
Then uh, raise number thirteen. Uh, probably remember some time ago, we came to you after the Berlin Water Control. Should also uh, agreed to this to do a evaluation of the free water systems in town.
Hmm.
We went through an RFP, we have a little bidder. We want to have a conversation with you before we move forward. Uh, to really understand, and I spoke to attorney Denofia as well.
Hmm.
Since it involves two other districts.
Yeah.
And.
Right.
We want to, we all want to make sure if you move forward.
Right.
We give the desired results and we can actually do that. Uh, because they are, they were less than enthusiastic to participate in the process.
Hmm.
Beginning. It mildly.
Hmm, so. Really?
Being said that, um, I don't know, but Ray, you want to say something?
I, I do. I, I brought my water gang with me today. I've called him a water gang rather than sewer gang.
The better.
Yeah, Liam Mitchell and Tom Lasker, who's also a neighbor of mine as well. So most of these gentlemen, particularly Bruce and Tom, have been on there for. Twenty years or plus. And Liam's been on here almost ten years. Yeah, so I brought him back as support. Yeah. This is one of the things where we, uh, as Roche had mentioned, we, earlier, later last year, we had looked at this and we had. And has suggested, and then he worked with attorney Denofia on this, that's coming up with a.
Sorry.
RFP um, was opened, the bidding opened up on February twenty-first. And we had two bidders and not terribly surprised, but was surprised in some ways because two of the bidders were basically. Uh, engineers that we've done work business with. DPC LLC. Um, is in uh, right now doing our, our work for the Deming Road Pump Station. Uh, they put in for a price of a hundred ninety-nine thousand to study all three systems. And uh, the other one was Leonard Engineering, which has been recently purchased by Haley Ward. Haley Ward has an extensive background, is actually located in Maine and has a lot of sewer background. And uh, the other item that um, Bernard did is uh, and attorney Denofia is more familiar with it than I am. Has included a subcontractor, Raftellus, which apparently does some work. Water utilities. So it looked like a pretty good program. Their, their bid proposal was hundred and twenty-two thousand and obviously that's the lowest bid. The question comes up and I think the board here is under the impression that the town would pay for this, but after discussing issues with. Kevin, and I don't know if Kevin's still on board, but looking at it and saying, you know, is this gonna be a tight condition? So then the question is, is. There's actually two questions. Um, and it's the same question we had earlier. Now we have a figure as to a dollar amount. But we still have the other concern and that's whether we're gonna get any kind of participation from either of the other two districts. That's gonna be problematic. So we're not sure how to approach it. We're actually looking for some kind of a plan to try to deal with this process.
I'm asked to. And speak to that. Yeah, I mean typically what you would do is uh, bring in the low bidder for a scope review. And have a conversation with them about. Um, and I haven't seen the proposal, so I don't know how it's broken down fee wise, but um, have a conversation about how much. And what information they need from KFD and WFD. And then, you know, we can do a FOIA request and get. Public records that way.
Um, there is one thing I'm not sure if you're familiar with, but Leonard, as Leonard. Did the water supply planning for both Kensington, Worthington and ourselves. So they do have a perspective from the water supply. A portion of it is, is something that's totally in the air because. None of the other two districts have really done much in the sewage area.
Okay.
But that would be a positive. And then of course, as you, as I indicated earlier too. Financial element of Raftellus, which I don't have any background in, sounded to me like a good area. And the other thing is with Leonard. Um, with here being bought over by Haley Ward, Haley Ward has a very strong sewer background. For the whole of the winged area. So that made them a lot more, not only because they were a low bidder, but they also seem to. Indicate that they were a better entity to, to reward of the contractor.
Yeah, I mean Raftellus is probably the preeminent. Uh, water industry cost of service rate structure consultant in the country, certainly in the northeast. He uh, Raftellus was head of Ernst &amp; Young's. Water Utility Division and then started his own shop. Some time ago. Um, I've met him in Regional Water Authority Rate Case Contexts. Um, he's got, you know, full staff of very competent people that work for him. So certainly that's a. That's a valuable component. I mean, my, my suggestion is the group of us can meet internally and. Go through the proposal, figure out what information they would need. You know, whether it's information we can get from DPH, whether it's information we can get through FOI, whether it's information that Leonard has access to. And could use it without, you know, running into any peril.
That's the other problem.
Yeah.
That they, they've indicated in the past, they don't want to contribute anything.
Right.
Per se, even if a report was written by Leonard, they don't want to make that known to us per se.
Yeah, well, there's different ways that we can get information. So we can.
Hmm.
Talk about that and bring them in for a scope review and.
Yeah. It's an odd reluctance that they don't want to work with the town that they. Take care of. I, I don't, I don't get it, but.
Well, I, what I did is.
An age-old argument and discussion, but.
I had passed out to you is two financial reports because I was talking to.
Yeah.
Planning.
Yeah.
Indicated that one of the financial reports. Uh, twenty twenty-one, uh, so obviously twenty twenty-two is due many times. Uh, Worthington's is twenty nineteen, apparently they haven't been updated in terms. What I did is highlight some of the areas here concerns because one of the things I've been mentioning in the past is, is a lot of over. Um, areas that were cited in terms of administrative costs.
Hmm.
Three utilities. And that's one of the things factored in here. Plus, I wanted you to see really, and I don't think anybody's had an opportunity to see any of their financial records. Is how much tax is collected by each of the districts.
Hmm.
Based on, on their uh, mill rate. They have a separate mill rate. Now Worthington's at one point eighty-eight and, and uh. Kensington's remained at one point one. It, it's a substantial amount of money that comes in from their mill rates. Which makes their rates look smaller than ours.
Hmm. That's how you figure out the tax that they're paying. Yeah, include the tax, yeah, right. Yeah. Okay.
So the next question comes up is the financing.
Why don't be careful that, that before we get to the financing piece, I think there are a lot of questions that we should probably um. Ask and really trying to avoid it. Regardless of who pays, you don't want to pay a hundred and twenty-two thousand and, and get something that. He can actually use.
Yeah.
We just talk about how to pay for it a little bit before that.
Totally.
This is a townwide problem. I don't use water or sewer. I don't have any skin in the game, but I'm a taxpayer in Berlin. And the way these departments. Fail to maintain their systems. Are gonna become a disaster. They're gonna affect all the taxpayers in town. And I think it's very important. That as a town, we identify these issues and everyone be involved in this study. I don't think it's just be the Berlin Water Customs pay for this study because everybody in town is gonna benefit from this information. And how to distribute the bills for the, at a basket and so on and so forth. But there's gonna be a day of reckoning. If you don't maintain pipelines, the big problem is the sewer lines crack. And groundwater goes in them and we're paying to treat that clean groundwater instead of just sewage coming from the houses.
Funny, you should mention that because right here, we just met with them and Mike Hearn was with me. Uh, and they found a gusher. Uh, they did the, and it turns out it's, it's in Worthington Fire District.
I'm shocked.
Well, uh, we, we were talking about it because when we define that the area. We're gonna ask them to take care of it. If you don't take care of it, we'll take care of it. Doesn't have to be Billam or something.
This study, I think, and if the counselor and you and the powers that be can. Identify what information we need, I think we definitely need to go forward with it. And I have no problem with asking the taxpayers to pay for it. This is a townwide issue. It's not isolated to your customer.
And I, I assume we, we assu- we assu- are assuming, or maybe we, I probably know from past experience, they won't contribute to this. We don't know yet.
They won't need to. Everybody in town's gonna contribute to it.
Did we ask them?
Correspondence was sent to. Uh, council for both WFD and KFD. Along with a draft RFP and an invitation to have discussions. We solicited comments and input. Uh, WFD had previously indicated to us an interest in an RFP and thinking it was a good idea, but. Now nobody wants to, you know, comment on it.
No comments? No, not enough?
No interest.
No comments were made with regards to the RFP. I don't think a word was mentioned of either.
Just that they weren't gonna participate.
Just that.
Yeah.
Pretty uh. Negligent in a way. I don't know what other words, trying to get the right word, but.
They're, they're ignoring the situation.
Yeah, I agree. That's.
All these years is creating this disaster.
That's what I'm saying.
We need to move forward with or without.
No, I agree. No, no, we have to do it. I just, I, I don't understand why they wouldn't participate, but it makes no sense other than. What? I don't know. You know, why, why wouldn't they?
Wouldn't even try to speculate.
Yeah, it's in the financials, but anyway.
Yeah, yeah. Huh? Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I, I get it.
What can the council do to move this forward? What's the best?
So we're gonna do, what, what did you propose to do, Roche, before we uh? So we're gonna talk, we're, we're gonna talk about?
We just, the internal group, you know, probably I suggest Ray, myself.
Yeah.
With Denofia, okay. We might go on.
Yeah.
Like that include Mike and Jim.
Yeah, sure. Then go through the RFP and.
Yeah.
Um, bring the, the person in maybe and ask uh.
Yeah, what they're gonna do.
How they're gonna get it done and.
Yeah.
I, I want to make sure the end resolve, the, the desired outcome can.
Useful.
Useful. Cause we, uh, I'm, this is like I, my short tenure here, we, we tend to spend money on studies and just stay on the shelf.
Yeah, I agree.
Avoid that. It's a lot of money and right now we don't have this.
We could back up. Um, we weren't able to demand a payment from the other water departments because we didn't have a hard number. We needed to have a finite number that they actually owe. We needed good data. And I'm hoping this study. Will give us that data so we can proceed with collecting a fair share from each apartment. Wasn't that the issue before? We didn't have a. This really doesn't have anything to do with that.
Par- partially, but not fully.
Not fully, but it should, didn't have to find what's coming from where? The study?
Yeah, that's part of it. Is part, part of it is if, for instance, on the middle town road. Um, they're using our pump station, they're using our sewer pipe.
Right.
And they, they, they basically think that that's, that agreement is not in place because of the other agreement on the Berlin Turnpike. Then on the Berlin Turnpike, they, they pick and choose what they want to pay for. That's a real problem.
Hmm.
And then additionally, I, and then just today, I was talking to Mike Persinowski, we found this section within our district. Where the customers are being Worthington customers and Kensington customers and they should be ours, on the, on the areas. So now I've got to approach that as an issue because that didn't, that's never come up. I can't, I can't understand why.
Well, whatever we can do to define these things and then use these studies as we're all pointing out.
That would be a good start.
Yeah, okay, we agree. I mean, there's no motion, just. Move forward and see, you know, make sure we're gonna get something out of this, which I'm sure we will, but let's discuss it before we spend, yeah, that's. Large sum of money for a study. And as you said, Roche, I agree with you. We do studies and they sit and. We may read them when they come in for a moment and then whatever.
I think if we start a study that demands information and FOI, and we can even make it public that they're refusing to get our information.
Yeah.
Um, this one uh, with attorney Denofia's input, I think was very comprehensive in terms of the RFP. We were looking for a lot of detail that last study did not include. The Fussen O'Neil study from nineteen ninety-six, which was withdrawn from the town council. Never really addressed the sewer issue. Just did the water and on the water rates, which is really kind of a partial.
Right, yeah.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Thank you all. Thank you. Thank you, guys. Thanks Jeff for weighing into.
Getting to the end here, almost there.
We're almost there, fool.
Item number fourteen.
Yeah, it's not over yet.
So um, we have submitted into you the list of lighted properties for section four dash fifteen of the ordinance of the town of Berlin. Action of, by the town council. So no, no action is required at this point.
Okay.
Um, you have some pictures. If you live in Berlin, you recognize all these buildings.
Yeah.
Property, right?
Oh, boy.
So the, the, the good news is um, we now have a zoning enforcement officer.
That's good.
So we give this to you. You have seventy-five days to add, change. Delete. Well, you can't really delete unless it's, you know.
Yeah.
Um, the situation is corrected. And then uh, if you don't. Have anything after seventy-five days, it automatically becomes the approved list.
Oh, okay, okay.
And then from that point on, the ordinance spells out exactly um.
What they do.
What we do in terms of notifying them by certified mail. Um, then giving them a time to uh. Correct the situation, give a timeframe. There's an extension timeframe that's provided to them. Um, up to a year. Then we also have a. Process here to, you know, impose fines and citations and things like that. But I, I, I think we have been light on this stuff. And we don't have a lot of lighter properties.
No, it's not too, too bad.
But uh, like the Elton Road property is actually on it, but it's getting uh, Jennifer is working with that now. It's with the courts and the.
Yeah.
Want to involve and the owner's attorney.
Yeah.
Uh, there's a.
Any.
Who's interested.
Oh, really?
And.
Oh.
Trying to convince the owner to sell it.
Oh, that is pro- maybe progress.
That's progress.
Oh, that's good.
Uh, these things take time, but I think you should start working on it and put some pressure on folks and because. The way it works, um, you know, to get these locations and actually. That's starting, starting people. Um.
Yeah.
The pocketbook, they might actually.
Yeah.
Start to take some action on.
Hmm.
So uh, this is for your uh. Know, review and feedback. And if I don't hear from you in seventy-five days, it becomes the list. Then I'll pull back to you at that point, what you're doing and what will get the uh. All rolling.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah, so thanks for the list.
You're welcome. Um.
I know we try and keep track of that and uh, but as you said, it's not, it's not too bad.
Yeah.
I mean, there's always gonna be something in every town, right? Take care of it.
Other questions on that?
Questions, folks? No, I think we're good. Um. Okay.
Moving along.
Fifteen.
Last item is uh, item number fifteen is the Small Cities CDBG Grant Fair Housing Month. It's April. Once a year, we come to the council. They are recipient of Small Cities Community Development Block Grant. And the ECD is a requirement that uh, that. You, the council, re-adopt the fair housing resolution, the fair housing policy statement. There's an affirmative action policy statement and a client with title six of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four. These are attached to the agenda, all these statements.
Every year, right?
Have, but since we, the requirement, when you apply for these grants, it's a requirement that. You actually re-adopt those every year, every April.
Yes, okay, we've done this before, yeah. Okay, so we'll take a motion on this.
Move to re-adopt the Fair Housing Resolution, the Fair Housing Policy Statement, affirmative action policy statement, and the compliance with Title Six of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four statement.
Second on that. Thank you. Uh, any, uh, further comments or questions? Hearing none, all is in favor? Aye. Opposed. So moved. Okay, so. What we're gonna do here now?
Do we have any appointments?
Yeah, we have a stop, I think.
Enlighten me, please. Enlighten me.
Um. So. Yeah. Um, Scott, I don't, Scott, I haven't talked to, I mean, Scott went on planning and zoning, right? Does he still want?
You were gonna reach out.
Yeah.
So I'm happy not to say I'm screwed or happy, but
Yeah.
I said that you're gonna reach out.
Yeah, all right. All right. Um, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll still see. I mean, he's got that other one, so. Not sure he wants all, if he wants two. Right? I mean, Scott's kind of busy.
I don't know.
Right? He's on planning and zoning. So yeah, let's, yeah, we won't.
We will call him.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm
How many are there open? How many? There's vacancy on there? On, uh, uh, commission for?
Commission for
Yeah, we have a vacancy. Um, Leah, let, let, let's just ask him. I, we still haven't spoken to him. We'll check with him just before we do that and, uh, that we have, uh, for Joe, back to, uh, Housing Authority.
You do, you could talk to Michael about permanent
Yes. Yes.
So, um, and you want to put him on and?
Um, no, 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 but, but no, no, I'm just, not yet. I wanted to talk to him a little bit more. I'm sorry. I, I don't know if you've ever really asked him, but, but Yeah, I don't, I don't know if he just changed or I'm not sure how that happened, but yeah, we'll talk to him, but
I'm not gonna do this until you tell me.
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, we're, we're down just a few here, so we'll, we'll, no, I know. Yeah, he's one we have.
Hold them up till there.
Speak to, huh?
You want to just hold them up till next time and go?
Uh.
You got anybody ready?
Yeah, I think, uh, John, uh, Dykem here, Dyken. I think he, uh, we can push him on because what do we have on planning and zoning? We have, uh, uh, alternate spot, right?
It is also, yes. The only for a year.
Yep.
So it would be in, oh, twenty twenty-four.
Yep. Okay. Yeah, so we can, uh,
I nominate John Dykem.
Yeah.
For the ultimate alternate spot on planning and zoning.
Okay, but before you do that,
Yes.
Don't talk to them because design something else.
We did. No, we, he, he want, he wa- he wants that, yes. I did speak to him on that. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, because he, he wanted, um, he wanted, uh, what did he want? Park and Rec, I think.
Oh.
But he couldn't, he couldn't make Park and Rec. That, that night for him, I think with his job is bad because I think they meet on, I want to say Thursday nights, maybe? Whenever Park and Rec, I think, whatever night Park and Rec typically met on conflict. Not Thursday, then it's something, maybe it's another night. It, it, something with Park and Rec conflicted with his schedule. I don't think this one does. Because I know I asked him and he said yes. So I might have the days mixed up. I thought though, he, he didn't want Park and Rec. I spoke to him, uh, just like a week or two ago. Yeah. I could ask him for it. I know. I'll ask him. Oh, my God. Yeah. I did, I did ask him though. Something was wrong with Park and Rec. It said, you want Park and Rec? You want this or that? So.
He's on the golf commission. That's Thursday.
Uh, no, no. Um. Yeah, all right. I'll ask one more time. I know I asked him though, and he said yes, but that's okay. Uh, I, I don't know why Thursday night was on my head. It was whatever, when, this, when does Park and Rec mean? Tuesday or Thursday? Okay, they do two. Okay. All right. Maybe he didn't. Maybe he's not clear on that. We'll, we'll straighten it out. Sorry for the confusion.
That's all right. I gotta do it right then.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, that's fine. That's fine. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, no, we'll ask it, but when we'll ask, uh, Michael to there too. Yeah, we, I, I don't, uh, yeah, because we have two. We're just gonna leave, I'll leave these two here. And then we have Joe Bajor ski back on, uh, Housing Authority. He's there, I guess, trying to get our project done, so. Uh, better get it done. Better get it done.
It doesn't happen. I'd like to see a joint meeting between housing and council and have a heart-to-heart talk about things. We gotta.
You don't have any evil look, Kay. Come on. Yes.
Not spinning my wheels here, and I understand Attorney Denofia is doing his job, but I'm not saying we have thirty-three million dollars if we didn't have thirty-three million dollars. Um, letter I sent at the beginning of this month, the funds letter from Osfargo Bank NA. Think it's sufficient, but taking Attorney Denofia's concerns into part, I will see what we can do to satisfy.
I appreciate this. This isn't a reflection on you, but I see a disconnect between the council and the Housing Authority. That was a separate entity. But like even over to generator, there was a little disconnect. If we had more communication, more, maybe we could help each other better.
Okay.
Not just, not just the housing project. As bad as we all want it, but everything. Maybe we can move forward on.
There's, there's a few issues where our interests collide.
We have, we have a lack of communication.
Oh, yes. I mean, there's been phone calls made and, you know, waiting for a return.
A little thought of help.
Yeah.
Okay.
Not on you. Uh, very proud. Uh, so like I said, there's no, no ill will, and I want to work to get this thing done.
Yeah, I know.
It's not about ill will. It's
Yeah.
Getting the work.
Yeah. All right. So, um, we'll take a nomination for
Nominate Mr. Joseph Pajorski. Um, back to the Housing Authority.
All right. Thank you for that nomination. Uh, any other nominations for that? Hearing none. We're going to close the nominations. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed. All right, so move.
Thank you very much. I'd just like to add one more comment. This is probably gonna be my, my last term on the Housing Authority.
Okay.
I think over the next couple of years, as replacements come up, you might want to consider someone that could get seated so that we create a succession.
Well, here, here again, we have no communication. We don't know these folks. We don't know what's going on, so.
Yes.
Help us.
Yeah, I would be more than happy to meet with you.
Help us through that. Yeah, we should do a meeting. Yeah. Yeah, we can do that.
You know?
Yeah.
Even if it's a subcommittee, you know?
Yeah.
Just meet wherever you guys want to do it.
Because I, I hear about those people, but that's all I've ever heard for ten years, you know, that Housing Authority and we see you and that's about it.
Yeah. All the other, the other commission members are fast and
And I'm sure they're working hard at things, but if, if we knew what they needed, we might be able to help.
Right. Thank you very much.
All right. Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
Have a good night. All right. So we are now to where? Town managers report? Yes, we are.
Very short, huh, manager?
Yes, we are.
I have some good news I want to share with you.
Oh, well, we always like that. Always good. Good news.
List is out for the road for this.
Oh, yes. Oh, yes.
You know, the first couple of ones that
Oh, I'm sorry. Thanks.
Christian Lane, Deming Road, Portus Pass, that's the big one that we are doing.
Yes.
The next one, uh, the town, uh, Porcher Road, uh, the Road, Satter Drive, Love Drive. You see the list.
Mm-hmm.
Then at the bottom, we have the state, uh, doing some of the work. So there'll be a lot of work, road work getting done. I know. Thank you. I appreciate that. They, they do jump and you
I just want to stop getting flooded. That's all it.
Yeah, you gotta take that.
Ever since they, ever since they built Route Nine, Berlin's been underwater.
So.
What's that? Oh, yeah.
The road is there? I know.
No, no. Yeah.
Remember, I remember.
Yeah.
We went through street scan.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah.
Find the worst roads.
Yeah.
Town.
Mine's not that nice either. I'd like to go.
Just saying. So you might want to look at these other roads and then ask, you know, if they any better or not.
But that's street scan thing. I'm not sure about that, but whatever.
It's better than someone going around and just
True. That's true.
The road
No, no, I'm kidding. I'm kidding. Yeah, see, there you go. Don, why does Donna get everything? Why do we, the rest of us need some roads?
The calls, the DOT.
My road's not DOT. I can just call town hall and ask them to do it, right?
Right, so, uh,
No, it's fine.
Lucky we plow your road.
Yeah, I know. That's true.
All, so they all know.
Yeah, no, I know. I, I, I worry about this, uh, summer with those, uh, the state of Connecticut projects there, but I mean, you know, long time coming, but a mess, a mess, but we need it.
I like it.
Well, it's kind of good. I mean, it needs to be done.
Order of when they're happening?
Uh, no.
No, not necessarily. So, yeah. I think that, I think the Farmington Avenue, right, and the whole, and, uh, all that stuff that Yeah, well, they're start, but they're starting, are they starting in April to, what's that sign say there? For, for porters. Yeah. They'll go through all this, yeah. It's going to be challenging through the summer, unfortunately. Um, but when it's done, it'll be nice.
Roads, yeah.
It'll be nice, which everybody complains about Porter's Pass and Christian Lane and all that.
It's really bad.
Oh, yeah. Oh, and it's, oh, it's great. It's getting done, no doubt, you know?
Um.
So, what's that? Oh, yeah, no.
Oh, that'll be a bummer, huh?
Oh, yeah, they'll be, they won't be too happy with that, but that's, that, that's okay. Yeah, they're gonna, they're gonna have to, right? Oh, boy. Anyway, no, thanks for that, Roche. It's good to.
Sure. I, the only other thing that I had was, you know, Mr. May, you already spoke about this, the budget.
Yes, yes.
Post everything, um, sit it under spotlight so that you click on it and it'll take you to
Oh.
Initial town manager's budget.
Okay.
Those show all of the adjustments. It's a two-page document like this. It's all adjustments that the Board of Finance made.
Yeah.
Now, when you, when you look at it, on the initial budget that was submitted, the reductions were two point five million dollars for the town. And then, um, one point three for the Board of Ed. So, you know, we still have an increase of five points, including the pension and all of the other stuff. Three point five, round numbers, one point four pretty much for the Board of Ed. So it'll be five point three adjusted for the town and three point oh, the Board of Ed, three point oh increase. The overall four point two increase. It's all there on a pension, just, just, you know, look at time. And then I'm not going to go through all of the things that we took out. In addition to that, uh, we also made some revenue adjustments to fund certain things that are fund balance and increase the anticipated fresh income because the rates have gone up, only that you make on the cash
Right.
That's sitting. So, I mean, to, to give you an example, this example is up there in terms of, uh, initially, remember we had a mill rate of last year.
It was thirty, what was it, thirty?
Four point three one.
Yeah.
You know, um, making, equalizing it to this year with the revale, it came down to twenty-nine point one six. When the initial budgets went to for the commands, it went up to from twenty-nine point one six to thirty-two point one nine. Now it's down to thirty point oh two.
Uh, is that what it is after the other night?
Yeah.
That's, it's at thirty?
Yeah, so it's a point eight six increase.
Uh, the mil, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's point eight six mill rate increase. Well, for now.
For now.
Yeah. We don't know yet.
Then
The couns- council still gets its crack at it too, don't forget.
Exactly.
So
Joe's
So Joe, can, is he
On vacation.
This week? Can someone else do it?
Oh, Kevin is, well, we can do it with someone else.
Can we, we, can we get it for the public meeting so we could at least, uh?
Try. I'm not going to promise you.
Okay.
We're gonna try. I mean, that's the goal. Yeah.
Yeah, it's important to be able to at least. Yeah, I know. It's that time for, I, I, I mean, because, and I'm not saying we're doing it or not doing it like we know yet, but, but to, to be able to present that, I mean, we'll present whatever we have, but it'd be nice to see some, uh, comparisons to, um, uh, you know, just so you guys know, the, just, this is what West Hartford's doing, just so you see and just so you have some, I I only have one, I got one other copy. That's why I got one for myself, but if you guys can share it, but, um, you know, not saying, you know, like we talked about the other night, Roche, we're not saying it, it might not work. But we, we, we need to look at it and I, I just wish we could have more knowledge of it by the twenty-eighth. Yeah.
So this example is up there. I was, that's what, three hundred and forty-five.
Yeah.
I'll be three hundred and forty-five thousand.
Yeah.
Initial budget we submitted, I've had a tax increase of, um, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars. Now with this adj- adjustment, it'll be two hundred and eight as submitted. So it's like seventeen bucks a month.
Yeah.
So just to give you an example, I mean,
Right.
Thing is three forty-five, but
Right.
My lower sum, my high.
Right, right.
So we also have this, I want all of you to do this, right? On your, uh, when you go to the budget website, we have a link.
Yeah.
You can click on the link and every property is listed. So you can query your address and get to your home and it'll show you what you paid taxes last year and what your taxes will be this year.
I saw it today, yeah.
So that, that's pretty cool. It's where you're going into
It's not pretty.
Well, depends on
It's not pretty.
Not now, look tomorrow.
What's it? They feel like tomorrow.
Morning.
It's Yeah, 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 yeah. It's not, it's not.
Councils aren't Texas, huh?
It's not pretty, but whatever.
Take a look at it.
Yeah.
You know? And, um, so we'll get that out to the, um, public so that they can, for the meeting, they can locate it and get
Yeah, that's important too, yeah. Yeah.
Their taxes and tax impact would be for the year.
And we still have, so we'll get what we can get for the twenty-eighth. Obviously, after that, it, it, after that meeting, they will set, you know, the Board of Finance usually has their meeting right that night.
Immediately.
Yeah. Send it to us for April fourth.
April fourth, yeah.
Right. But when, it, it, let's say we adopted the two-year transition plan. What's the drop dead? Because I think you have to change a mill, you could change a mill rate later, right, into it or whatever.
Other ones we have to change, like, this and the mill rate, so.
Yeah, but they could change.
They can change it even after the
Yes, that's my point, right?
The last day.
After the referendum, but, 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 so what's the drop dead date for this? If we did this transition, when do we, who, how do we implement that?
Well, it's a phase in.
Right. Right, that's what I mean, yeah.
Statue.
Yeah.
It's not, the statue says it's up to five years.
To phase it in?
Yeah.
If you wanted to.
But there's a, there's a formula that.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
So, when you're thinking about.
It's in the article, we have it. Right.
You gotta apply the formula and find the numbers to see what the mill rate is. As, as the percentage of, as the assessment, right, which is a percentage of fair market value, fair market value doesn't change.
Right.
Taxes based on the assessment.
Right.
As the percentage of the assessment goes down, mill rate goes up, because you gotta fund the budget. Right? That's, that's the target that you have to hit, so whether you have a higher mill rate and lower values, or, uh, uh. A higher mill rate and lower values, it, it doesn't, the budget's the budget.
So why, why would they do this then?
Because. What, this, this statute that allows the phase in came about in two thousand five, two thousand six timeframe. Once we went to, we did, uh, every ten years, we did revale until ninety-nine. Municipalities complained that doing revale once a decade doesn't allow you to capture. The ebb and flow of the real estate market.
Sure.
So they changed it to five years. Then, in two thousand five, everybody complained that there was a bubble. Actually, while I'm a few weeks, I'll talk about what it is.
Yeah.
And what, what they mean by that isn't just the percentage of appreciation in single-family home prices. It's a bigger issue with grand lists and municipalities in Connecticut as a result of this revale, whether it's twenty-one or twenty-two. Is the shift because of the higher rate of appreciation for residential real estate versus commercial and industrial. So when you have a higher rate of appreciation, you're shifting some of the tax burden from commercial and industrial to residential. That's why the phase in.
Yeah, but.
Okay, lessen the blow.
Right.
On the residential tax payer, who's having more of the burden shifted to them as a result of having the value of their home go up more. Than the commercial or industrial grid.
Which we do have that issue this year, right?
Yep.
But it'll help to look at the hard, some hard numbers to see.
If you're really gonna be soft paying the burden.
Correct.
Because like I said.
Right.
If the, if the budget's a hundred million dollars.
Right.
And the grand list is two billion dollars, and seventy percent of the grand list is a billion four. Then, you know, you multiply that times whatever mill rate you need to fund that hundred million dollars.
Yeah.
Grand list is three billion, then the mill rate's lower, right? That's why you have municipalities like French that have a low rate of eleven.
Right.
It's not because they're, they're fiscal judicious. Because they have a grand list.
Yes.
That is chock full of residential properties valued over twenty-five million dollars.
Yeah.
Which you like having a bunch of commercial properties.
Right, 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 yeah.
So, so ultimately, you know, people need to understand, I don't mean new people, I mean, in general. And this, this comes up in all the municipalities, they're doing tax appeal work nineteen ninety. And it's, the budget is the budget, right? So you can have a mill rate that's lower. It used to be, when we did revale every ten years, that you had these really significant runs. You know, like, let's say that pre-reval, your mill rate's thirty, and then post-reval, your mill rate's twenty. Because the, because the revale was being done every ten years, they had this real significant bump in the grand list. Because you were capturing ten years worth of value, right? But then, like I said, the legislature decided that, hey, you know what, ten years is too long. And there also were municipalities that weren't doing revale every ten years.
Oh, they weren't even doing it, yeah.
So, the idea of doing it every five years is to capture the ebb and flow of the market.
Right.
The problem with it is no matter when you do it, there's some timing component, so if you do a ten, one, twenty-one revale. You're really smack in the middle of the COVID part, right? If you do it ten, one, twenty-two, then you're still getting, because typically they're gonna do massive appraisal, look at sales. Twelve months prior to the revale date, so if you're looking at September, October twenty-one to September, October twenty-two, you're still getting some of those sales. Although, you know, I showed you right before the meeting, there's a Wall Street Journal article, about his Miles paper. About the fact that February was the first negative month in a lot of years. So you're seeing the impact of the higher interest rates.
Sure.
You're seeing the impact of inflation and the economy and the normalization really, because you had this big surge, right? Just to the George, if you talk about how much inventory there was during that March twenty twenty, let's say. Spring of twenty-one timeframe, COVID was really shutting everything down, there was a lack of inventory, prices gets by. Then when there's some normalization in the home building, more of a normal inventory, prices start to reflect that, so. There's really no perfect time.
No.
To do a revale, there's also this, like, at the same time they passed that phase in statute, passed the statute that allowed you to delay. Revale a year, and, you know, I had, I had towns that I pleaded with them. I showed them like FDIC reports, saying there's no bubble in that, there's no bubble.
Oh, don't, don't.
They put revale off, and then a year later, values were higher.
Higher, so they, wrong choice, yeah.
I said, and of course, if you put it off, if I had towns put it off from oh five to oh six, and oh six to oh seven, if only you could have put it off to oh eight, because then.
Then it was, whoa, way down, yeah, right, right.
Timing it, you know, it's just not, it's like trying to time the stock market.
Yeah, can't do that, so this.
Start, you have to start revale so far in advance, because the mass appraisal process.
Right.
So time gets something.
Right.
It's not like you could say, okay, we're gonna do revale next month, we'll put it off.
Right.
Eighteen-month process.
Right, up, yeah, yeah.
Connecticut tends to be, I, I still think we fully haven't fully repotted two thousand and, Connecticut tends to.
They say we haven't, yeah.
Where we land nationwide and.
Yeah, well, so. We just gotta look at it, see if it works, right?
I mean, look, you're, you're, it's, it's not something that you have an option over, you have to do revale.
Sure.
And the statutory mandate is fair market value, right, so, you know. You don't, you, you, you can't, when you do mass appraisal, like, and use an algorithm. Residential real estate is valued based on the property sale. Most commercial real estate is valued. Can't make up sales, you can't ignore sales, you can't say, well, you know, we don't really think the homes in Berlin as of ten, one, twenty-two. Are worth that much, because we think that those sales were overpriced, you gotta rely on the data.
Sure.
And if equals home value, in, in a lot of worlds, increased home prices are a good thing.
Oh, I, like.
Building equity in your home.
I think they are, but until the tax bill, until, until the tax bill comes, yeah. Yeah, yeah, I'm with you, but I, what I always think about is, the, um, the tax bill comes. And. The seniors and folks that are on fixed income, you know, they can't afford a tax bill like that, they feel it big time in their fixed income, so.
West Hartford approach.
Yeah.
Twenty-five percent of the previous value and only seventy-five.
Yeah, I think.
Current revale, latest revale.
Yeah, I think it was seventy-five and twenty-five.
So, when, when you do that.
Yeah.
Tax burden shifts slightly to commercial, right?
I, I think so.
Everybody has to pay.
I think so, yeah.
Paying the full amount.
Right, 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 so, and the commercials, the lowest one, right, we were, what, thirteen percent, the, the value? I think the average appraisal, uh, average value of commercial property in this real is thirteen percent, the, the overall average seventeen. But the single-family homes is twenty-one percent, I think, the overall average.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I mean, you know, we're getting hit, the, the residents, the homeowners are getting hit the biggest in this one. In particular, anyway.
Listen, you know. There are, people have, we have to the Board of Assessment and Field Process, that's why Bill sounds. Right, because the Board of Assessment Field Process is over, that's a very intense, every night. You know, I think.
Right. Yeah.
Which is not a lot.
Yeah.
Less than.
How many? Not really that big, no.
Less than what we had last time.
Interesting, yeah, that's interesting. Yeah. Yeah.
Question, what happened, I mean, not that you're gonna, you don't know what they're gonna do, but if you get new values now with this technology. All the folks who have gone through the BA and all that, everybody's gonna get a new assessed value, no?
Right, but you don't appeal the assessed value, you appeal the fair market.
Right.
So somebody, if, if, even if you do a phase in, if somebody thinks, hey, my house isn't worth four hundred thousand, it's worth two hundred thousand. You know, they can still appeal, even though their tax bills.
Well.
It's, 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 the, the, the function.
We'll see, we'll figure it out.
Because you have a well-run community.
Yeah.
People don't have the problem that, say, Hartford has.
Do, yeah, no.
Okay.
Thankful for that, yeah.
People wanna appeal, I was at Board of Assessment Deals in Hartford last week, a couple of my.
Yeah, it's their, uh.
I get so many calls from people who wanna bring appeal.
Right.
And I say to them, but the same thing.
Yeah.
Do you believe that your property is worth less, or are you just unhappy with the tax? And the answer, ninety-nine percent of the time, I think ninety-five, is the tax bill.
Tax bill, of course.
That's because the mill rate's seventy.
Is that what it is in Hartford now? Oof, seventy-five, the mill rate.
Okay, so.
Oof.
You know, it's like the same thing in Kansas, the mill rate's fifty-eight.
Yeah.
It's not that your property's not worth what the town values it at, it's that your tax bill's too high.
Yeah.
Your mill rate's too high.
Well, yeah.
Have that issue here.
No, I know, right.
It's not like people are bringing appeals, you know, in the seven years I've been defending the tax appeals.
Yeah.
First of all, there's not.
Yeah, yeah.
Even after the last revale.
Right.
Secondly, we don't have people saying, I'm appealing because my taxes are.
Right.
Most of the, I think we've had like two residential appeals in seven years, both of them are commercial.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Under twenty, and it's just, you know, hey, my income capitalization approach yields net operating income of X.
Yeah.
Or I use the capitalization rate of Y, you know, I think you're pretty well, those appeals too.
Yeah, I, I just.
Several appeals withdrawn without gain.
I just worry that this time, you have people, um. I don't know how many, and their, their vote will be at the referendum, and that's, that's the way it will be, but. They, um, are looking at some percentage increase, particularly with the Board of Ed, let's face it, they, you know, upped it to over five percent. At least the board did, the, right, the superintendent wants, what, four point five, or whatever he wants. And I, I, people look at that and say, yeah, give them the whole thing, I don't think they're, hopefully with this list that goes out, they will see. Wh- with, with the Board of Ed increase of, of three percent that we suggested, or that the, um, Board of Finance suggested the other night. And the mill rates on that is what, less than, less than a mill, at least on that proposed budget. They're still having a, you know, some houses have very significant tax increase, and I don't think people. Arguing for more government spending understand what it's gonna cost, I mean, you're gonna double, yeah. I, well, I agree with you, but that's, people are out there, I, I don't know why this year there's such a dust-up, because, again, the Board of Ed's getting. Like I mentioned before, more than they got last year, but, but they're not focused on what that tax bill's gonna be without even. Even if we gave the Board of Ed nothing, their taxes are still going up, right? Which is.
A lot of municipalities are having a double whammy.
Yeah.
They're in a revale year, and they use ARPA money.
Oh, yeah, well.
On the shortfall in their budget.
Oh, they did that, yeah, see, we didn't, we didn't, yeah, yeah.
Oh, government said you could.
Right, yeah, so.
You said, because they changed, they, they.
Yeah, that's right.
Changed the formula.
Right.
You didn't actually have to have a shortfall.
No.
They gave you a number and said, if you were.
Yeah.
Here, then you had a shortfall.
Right.
Whether you did or not.
Yeah, and we didn't.
Or you can plug money from ARPA in.
And we didn't do it.
So if you did that, use that extraordinary revenue rate of funding split.
Yeah.
Now you're in a revale year.
They're getting hammed.
That hole in the budget.
Yeah, I'm so glad we didn't do it that way, but, uh, I think we took a little bit out last year, but not, most of it's going to the Willard HVAC project. So that's much better, you know.
It's gonna, a lot of communities.
Yeah, I just, I, 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 it's frustrating, that's why, I'm, I'm sorry, folks, I know it's late, we all wanna go home, believe me, nobody more than me, but. Um, I just, just, we gotta understand this, because people are gonna ask, you know, we get asked questions, right, all the time about all this, and. We're the ones who feel the heat, because we're the elected officials, and they write letters to us when they're complaining about whatever, whatever they want, you know, whatever they want, so. I think it's important we're all able to explain it, you know, with this year in particular, the revale is, you know, big one, so, anyway. Appreciate Jeff, the, the info is good, no, 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 it's, no, it, we.
Every night of the week.
Yeah, we, we kinda need to know that, and, and it's important, we know it before that public hearing, and we get information out, which I know the Board of Finance will do. It's their meeting, but, anyway, okay, that's good, are you, are you done with your, you are now, yes.
Here's the thing, what's the deadline, and we don't know what the positive value is now, the new alley, the police station renovation.
What?
Trying to get some, for the.
Oh, yeah, for the police station.
Pulling out an application.
Yeah.
What's the number? By this week, right, we'll get it, I mean, I'm circulating with Mike and Kevin and the chief, yeah, but we'll get it to you. When I, I was gonna go with three and a half or four million.
For the police station? Yeah, I wouldn't, I, I wouldn't go over four, but.
Three and a half, maybe, I'll, I'll confirm.
That's what Don, Don had an estimate of maybe three and a half. Um, there, special committee reports, we, we had our ordinance committee, um, we, we are still talking about the. ATV, um, ordinance, yeah.
I'm sorry, it's. Ordinance committee.
Oh, yeah.
We're coming to a point, I, I don't know what they want, they don't know what they want.
Well, I think, I think, I think we know what they want, but I, we.
Just nothing.
They want OT, no ATVs, right?
I don't know, do you wanna do that?
No, I don't think that's fair to the people.
That's why I asked.
It's fair, but.
You said something, I was going. I mean, they said the same thing for the last three months.
You know, we don't wanna.
Yeah, well, you're right.
Tell us what the dirty work is.
Yeah, well, I, I. Yeah.
People have neighbors that ride dirt bikes around all.
You know the situation, so we, we've, Donna, we had some language that we, so we can, you know, it's our special committee reports, so we're before that. But there's language that we've come up with now that we may add, and, and I don't know if the neighbors that are being disturbed by the, the dirt bikes are, are good with it. So we, we, one more refrain to let everybody look at it, but at some point, we probably have, we, we gotta make the decision what to do. A little, a little bit, they gotta compromise a little bit, right, with us, for, for the sake of the neighbors, it's the rights of both parties, right? We can't just pick one over the other, but, yeah. Yeah, 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 the chicken thing, oh, that's like, go to the chickens, oh, no, it's gonna go to the chickens, but, but, um, so.
Then the ATV drivers will be in.
Yes, probably, yeah, well, that's why we have to kinda, we gotta balance it the best we can for those folks, and for the whole town, it's the ordinance for the whole town. Which they need to realize, which I know they do, but, so it's difficult, but, so anyway, we're, one last shot at, at it, and I think we have to just. Well, I think there's good language in it this time, which could tweak it, what they wanted, some of the hours, right? Yeah, 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 from the, from the property line, not from the dwelling, yeah. Yeah, I agree. Way over, way over on that, yeah, you're over on the property line.
Way over there instead of.
Yeah, we could fix that, I think that's a, a reasonable one and easy, and, and maybe the, the. Yeah.
Also.
Oh, yeah.
Limit where people can lie.
That's true too, that's true too.
So instead of, like, it's the hours that people are really gonna.
And that's another thing.
But if we really focus in on increasing the amount of feet.
Right, might help that hour thing, yeah. I mean, I know, sound travels, I mean, you can't avoid that, but two hundred and fifty feet.
Yeah, I would solve the whole problem.
Twenty fifty feet is, that's from property, that's pretty, that's a long way, if they have that kinda space there. Well, well, no, we're two hundred and fifty feet of the dwelling.
And twenty-five from the property line.
And twenty-five from the property line, so, huh? Yeah, right, it's two fifty from the dwelling, so I, we have to kind of, I'm sure we could fix that. I, we, I think we'll, we have to just get there next time, because we've been, we've been, what's, how long, a year, at this?
I, I love to hang out at this group, but.
No, 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 I know, no, we have, no, we have to end it.
It's just, I feel like we are just journeying.
Yeah, well, I, I think tonight, though, we, we finally get the language, we, we got good language in there, we could tweak the language, I think the language that we're putting in is good.
Happy with the language, they.
No, but, well, they're gonna have to, we're, we're, both sides are gonna have to compromise.
The guy, if you, the world, but, what.
Yeah.
Move the whole thing.
Well.
Electric ATV should be a lot.
Yeah, there you go, electric, electric ATVs, there you go. Could be it.
I like that.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll be tar and feathered by the ATV owners after we do that with the electric ones, yeah, but we'll, we'll figure, I think, I think we're close. And I think they'll be reasonable at that point, maybe, I'm optimistic. So that's the special committee report, you guys know, it's Council of Communications, anything other than police pension, did we find out what the status is on the police?
I'm expecting a proper.
Oh, great, Thursday for the, that, that's wonderful, and then could we just work on to, one last thing, I'm sorry, one last thing, signs for the referendum. Vote coming up at the end of April, last year we did little signs, could we do eight four-by-four signs, bigger ones, and put them at like, say. Uh, you know, by. Uh, you know, by uh, across from, you know, Walgreens and the park, our little park there by Blockbuster or the new Starbucks, one there. One, wh- wherever the eight most visible intersections are. Yeah, and and just because that way the sign is there, vote on. The budget referendum, we could put a date on the bottom maybe and you could change a date every year, right? You can maybe make.
You're gonna have one polling place for a referendum?
Three, we got three, the three. So people know.
People don't get.
Oh, the, the, the hearing. The hearing, for the budget hearing, yes, yeah, very important. And and for the cannabis one too. I mean, you got, you got something out of the camp.
They had one, they had.
Both those, those are, that's out. It was crickets. It was crickets. Yeah, nobody was there, yeah.
You know why?
People were happy.
People were happy.
Yes.
Cause two years we had.
No one.
Zero.
Two.
We didn't even have anyone.
No one, correct. The last three years, folks have been happy. I don't know why this year they're not, because it's the same budget, basically. For the Board of Ed, those are the, you know, those are the folks that are. I don't know why.
If you took the list of people that emailed for the Board of Ed action.
Yeah.
And cross-match it to people that earn a living from the education industry.
Oh, yeah. Oh, I hope not, but maybe I don't.
Cause I know when we had the hearings for the.
Yeah.
Charter revision.
Yeah.
It was all people that earn their love, living in the education industry that spoke.
Yeah. I I just don't, I I don't get it because we're actually increasing what they're giving them from last year and they lived within their means last year with the two and a half. So I don't know why the three, I mean, one of the ladies in the office. Uh, in the, in the audience last night, she said, oh my God, it's a disaster. I said, you're getting more than you got last year. And you lived within your means last year, you didn't have any, there was no catastrophe.
There were a few educators that did emails, but I don't think they were in our district.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, there's been a few emails with folks, but but they're just like somehow, I don't know what's that, well, there is some stuff on social media that's a big disaster. I don't, I don't know why they're saying that this year. There's no reason to say that because we're giving them more than they got last year. And they still had a surplus last year, two and a half percent. It was about five hundred, six hundred thousand, I think, something like that with there, so. I I I know they lost some of the funds, some of the grant money hence, but then, so we're giving them a little bit more. So I don't know where the disaster falling off a cliff is, because if you look at their own chart. They're happy with what they've got the last three or four years. That's in their budget this year. They're happy with it. We're giving them more than they got last year. They were happy last year. So we're giving them more and people still are not, I I don't, I don't, I can't, I don't know what's going on out there, but. Hopefully, that budget meeting, we can explain it, right?
Do go up. I mean, I work for the State Department of Education.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Costs go up every.
Sure, of course.
Budget because I never had a vendor and I, I was in charge of purchasing.
Yeah.
Software.
Yeah.
For the, the technical high school system.
Right.
I never had a vendor that came to me and said, hey, we're gonna decrease prices.
No, of course not, of course not, yeah.
Every year, the.
And they're stuck with inflation like everybody is. Everything they buy is gonna cost more like all of it. But their big thing is we have contractual ab, we have contractual obligations we're stuck with. Well, you approved them two years ago when you gave all your executives big raises. You generated these costs if. I used to compare what town people made compared to what people in the education department made with similar positions. And they made thirty or forty percent more than the town employees did.
Sure.
There was a huge disparity.
Right, right.
One vice principal in a grammar school of three hundred students made more than our police chief at the time.
Right, but at the same time, if you don't keep pace with the competition from the other towns, you're not gonna get quality people running your schools. You know, so I understand what you're saying, but that's all relative to what the industry of education.
And I don't, I don't mean to extend this meeting and and I, I'm law for getting a top shelf teachers. I just think we could tell little Johnny where to sit for a lot less money in the administration, and I mean it.
Well.
Very top level.
Yeah, yeah.
But Berlin, I don't think we have any sisters who go to.
No, they, they, they get, they got, they eliminated that one position. But here's the thing, how come in their present?
There's, I've seen really.
But, but Donna, how about this? How come in all their budget presentation, comparing us to Glastonbury, Farmington, wherever, it's all financial? But how come I don't see, so as a taxpayer, what do I get for my three percent? How are my kids doing? How come they don't talk about any of that? They never do. Like, tell me that Berlin kids are doing better. Than the Farmington kids on standardized tests or whatever, whatever measure you use in your, in your world, we never hear that. All we hear is, oh, we have contractual obligations. Well, okay, the money we're giving you, we're giving you tax money, just so we're giving tax money to the police department. I hope you're enforcing the law out there, you're doing your job, right? How are our kids doing? I've heard nothing of that in the last eight years I've been the mayor. Now, unless I, you really have to dig for it and ask them and even then you get really, well, you know, this year, I mean, you just, you don't get. You don't get any answers. It's very frustrating. What's the return on investment? Everybody wants a return on investment, even taxpayers.
That is something that.
It's frustrating.
You know, that's something that people in the um, education field are not used to thinking that way.
No, I get it. I get that.
So they don't.
Yeah.
It's like, they're, if you.
Yeah.
You know, I didn't think, I mean, when I worked for the state, um, I thought a lot about that.
Yeah.
Well, what is the return on investment?
Sure.
We had, there were things sitting on that were, we're just paying for, and I went through, cause I had a certain budget that I was in charge of. And I went through and I'm like, nobody's using this, get rid of it. Nobody's using this, get rid of it. And then there were certain things that some of my schools were using, but some of my other schools aren't using. And I said, okay, we're gonna do it on a case-by-case basis. If you're still using this resource, fine, I'll purchase it for you. And I'm not purchasing it for the other seventeen schools. They're not using it.
Right.
But unfortunately.
There's still a lot.
People don't take seriously their, their obligation to taxpayers, that you're not.
Correct.
And they didn't just come from anywhere.
Well.
Taxpayers.
Uh, that's.
Responsibility to execute.
But that's our job to hold them to task.
Exactly.
Yeah.
You know, so, you know, I, I may not hear you.
Yeah, it's frustrating.
Right.
And it's frustrating when the wrong information gets out there too. That's the part that's frustrating. Yeah.
Quantitative.
Yes.
Now, where's the quantitative?
Where is it?
Data support, you know, and I think.
Why, why are we pay, let's say we looked at, but like Glastonbury's on a list, Glastonbury and Berlin spending is pretty close. I think actually we spend more per people than Glastonbury does.
Okay.
But why are their results, I'm guessing, I I have no idea. Are they better? They might be.
Yeah, yeah, they're.
So we're spending more per people than they are and they got a better, they got a better return on investment, so. And they want more.
Household income.
Yeah, okay. But ours is pretty high. I mean, I know we're not Glastonbury, but but I mean, it's, it's pretty high.
But that's typically what you're, for me, it's for.
Yeah, yeah.
Do two, ten to four lights for that.
Yeah.
It's the, you know.
There's gotta be more of that. Well, we need all these extra support people and positions and teachers and all this. Okay, what are we getting for that? We'll give you that. We'll give you those positions. What do we get out of it? What do our kids, not us, what do the kids get out of? It's the kids.
If that.
That's what it's for, the students.
You know, with any board of edu, is there a board of education out there that is, is. That's their protocol when they present their budget is to also.
Well, what, what, what?
I can tell you that the six years that I was on the Trumbull.
Yes.
And it would give us our budget.
Right. Yep.
There would be an entire section.
On that.
Talked about, you know.
Performance.
Many ancient scholars.
Okay, there you go, yeah, yeah, good. That's good.
Their district resource group.
Right.
With Greenwich, the Westport.
Okay.
Who painted.
Yeah.
And, you know, Greenwich.
Top group, yeah.
Greenwich was spending, you know, twenty thousand a pupil.
Right.
Thousand nineteen.
Right.
And we were spending sixteen five and everyone, oh, why do you spend so much less than Greenwich?
Right, huh, well, yeah.
It's like the fifty-first state.
Yeah, that, right, I was gonna say, that's a complete odd comparison there, yeah, that's.
But in their facilities, Greenwich, their facilities are grossly neglected.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's like, it's like walking, it's like walking into a, it's true, your old neglected building.
That's interesting.
Money doesn't equal a better student, I.
No, no.
What our focus was. That was our focus.
I grew up in a town where they had Catholic high schools and public high schools and that Catholic high schools had pennies to spend per student compared to the public schools. And all the top scholars came out of the Catholic schools. On very limited budgets.
There's, so a lot of things to take into consideration. You know, you also have to think about things like special ed, you know, social education, that is all federal mandate.
Absolutely, no, we get that, yeah.
That we have to support, we have to provide X, Y, Z.
And it's growing incredibly, unfortunately, right? That part of their, but I think it's twenty-five percent of our budget now.
Just the number of kids with, with issues, autism rates are up.
Right, right.
And so you have kids that.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, special needs.
No, no, I, we know that, I, that, and and that, and that's uh, and that's frustrating. You know, I mean, cause that, that, they have the, you know, like they always tell us, they have a couple of kids come to the district or have to be outsourced, that's a lot of money.
Spend properly.
Oh, yeah.
The parents can sue the board.
Yeah, no, I know.